Meeting to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, the school committee meeting for Wednesday, June 11th, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of members.
I'm Steve Tringalli from Millville.
Brian Faulkner, Millville.
Jane Reggio from Millville.
Eunice Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Bonaco, Millville.
Dr. Perry Davis, Superintendent Schools.
And Bill Chaplin from Blackstone.
The press public forum, we're going to be doing some recognition of some 2014 retirees, so we're very pleased to do that, to hear it. So we're going to have them come up?
Yes.
So we have Arlene, we have Buddy, we have Christine.
Marie.
Marie.
Buddy's here.
Buddy's here. The only brave.
I've been shy, I guess.
I can speak for myself again.
So, so one of the things that we do is tradition here, at least since I've been watching and been a part here, is there's usually a dedicated book that is kind of a, I always think everyone leaves a footprint no matter what, but this is kind of a physical book that kind of stays on, so we're each going to read.
Buddy has picked a book, it's getting hard to find, but Bridgette did find it.
It's out there. If not, you can borrow mine.
It is out there, she's located it and it's being shipped, but it wasn't, you can share the title with everybody.
It's called "Group Was," and, sorry?
It's actually for the upper end student that is interested going on to music, but it deals with how you express music, rather than just go doing learning notes and stuff, it goes into the how to express music in sort of analytical way, so you can actually go into academically, but in the end of the day, it just talks about what does music mean and how do you express it.
Very fitting.
Very good. Yes, I have his book, as you can see here. This book is doing on behalf of Ronald L. Bebo, retired educator from the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, years of service 1979 to 2014. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
So why don't we just read the others that aren't here, and then we can go from there?
Yeah, I have Marie Smith, who is an educator at Millville Elementary School for many years, 1976 to 2014, so her book that she chose is a Caldecott winner, "Make Way for Ducklings", Robert McCloskey, everyone better shake their head that they know this book, because you can't get through elementary school without knowing this book, especially in the Boston area. So congratulations to Marie, hope she enjoys her retirement and some well-earned rest down on Cape Cod.
And I have Arlene Markhart-Beal, who was a retired educator, her years of service was 1995 to 2014, I believe she was a TA?
No, she's a teacher, a special ed teacher here, middle school.
And her book was "A Journey to a New World: Diary of a Member of Patience Whipple", Mayflower 1620, so I'm sure there's some great reasons why she picked that book, discovery and so forth, so we thank her for her service as well.
And I have Christine Libero, who served in, at the JFK from 1984 to 2014, and she chose "The Giving Tree" by Shel Silverstein, and I'd have to say personally this suits her, she is an amazing person and always happy, so her, her personality was contagious and she will truly be missed at the JFK and I believe also at the complex.
I mean, all, I mean, how many years was the total between all of them?
I don't know.
A lot.
Too many to count. Some of them were higher than Mr. Cullen.
Back in the old days.
I mean, clearly, I mentioned beforehand.
What a good night to be here.
There's, there's clearly, I mean, all four of these individuals clearly left a footprint besides this book.
All right.
We have some company.
Good, just time for your speech.
Hi Buddy.
Welcome.
Hello, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Little friend's out in the hallway.
That happens, so do you want to rehearse again?
I just dedicated your book, I'm going to rededicate it for you, so, and you can tell us why you chose this, I told everybody it's because you can't get through elementary school unless you know this book, so.
That's right, it has always been my favorite book, and if you ever heard me at the end of the day, or after school program or something, I will make the kids go, "Come on, my little duckling, quack, 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 quack," and we quack, quack, all the way down the hallway and out, and being close to Boston and whatnot, I've always loved that book. My children love it, and I still read it to my, I read it to my high school kids and I read it to these third graders also, so, yes.
Well, you know, I personally just want to, now that you're here, I just want to recognize some of the things I enjoyed, one was going to the colonial days and volunteering in your classroom, and also the, the wiffle ball competition that we had every spring, and I want to thank you for the role you played in my children's education, very important to them and to me, so thank you.
And Arlene has joined us, and we're going to rededicate your book as well, so tell us why you chose this book.
I just, not only I think are they good for children, but adults, you know, could enjoy them as well, because there's history and, um, what do you call it, fiction, real, historical fiction is really my favorite type of novel to read, I just love the whole series.
Can we show them the inside, the part that's dedicated to them?
The dedication inside.
Oh, how nice.
Same with your years of service.
Now, are they going to be put in this library?
Yes.
In the respective schools, yes.
Very nice.
From Millville School, JFK, or AFM, library, Millville.
Come back in a few years, may see a few crayon markings through here.
Absolutely.
That's okay.
Absolutely.
Why is it getting red, right?
Yes.
You don't want it pristine, you want it worn out.
No, I want it worn, I do, thank you.
We want to wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy all.
And thank you so much for your dedication. So next we have Retiree Health Insurance with Mr. Mark Juber and Mr. Fred Hartnett.
Thanks for having us.
Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Committee, I would echo Mark's thanks, also like to congratulate the retirees and commend them on their, not only many years of service, but many, many, many contributions to the district, I was thinking, sitting back there, that, okay, Mr. Bebo, from like 1970 when the district was formed, till 2003, we had three superintendents, one of whom's sitting back here tonight, Tom Cullen, Aldo Chaky, who's on the FinCon and Milfed unable to be here tonight, and me, and I was the assistant to the other two, but this, that pales in comparison to the fact that we've had two directors of music during that time, Tom Hesney and Buddy Bebo, so you do the math, you say that's an unbelievable record to have two guys who have made that kind of contribution to the district and its kids, so I congratulate all of them, they all did great work and I was proud to be able to work with them.
Do you want me to start?
Whatever, whichever.
This came to our attention a few months ago, what has gone on in the past is when people have retired here, in our contract, there is a 50% reimbursement if you keep, with the retire, with the insurance that you have, you get 50%, you have to pay 50%, the district pays 50%, it's in our contract, goes back to the 9A law of our Mass General laws, in the past, if that person died, the member has, the spouse of that member has been able to keep that insurance at the same rate, 50%, that would be according to 9D, and it is, Fred's going to give you a lot of the history, we believe that has passed before, but we don't have any history of that, we don't have the paper, that's the problem here, we're coming here to try to put some, find, put some print on this, that actually that it is there, I'd like to thank Mr. Davis, Dr. Davis, for all he's done, everything he's done and he's told us has been right, I know Fred knows the history too, and I believe everything he's told us has been right, unfortunately, we're getting two rights and we're getting the wrong outcome, I think Fred can explain it a little more of the background, and if we can get 9D, if we can get the committee to approve 9D officially, and we get it on the contract, we can keep doing what has been going on here for probably 40 years, I'm going to let Fred to, to give us the, the history of it, so that's why we're here tonight.
You know, they always refer to the old guy to give the history, following the unfortunate, untimely passing of Mr. Tom Fury, who some of you may have had as a teacher here, outstanding chemistry teacher in the district, he died this past February, his widow, Margaret Fury, asked me if I would interface with the district and with the Mass Teachers Retirement System on her behalf, to determine what her level of survivor benefits were and so forth and so on, at that point, I was informed by the district that Mrs. Fury would be required to pay 100% of her premiums for both medical and dental coverage, which was, in my view, in direct conflict with the practices followed by the district since, as far as I know from its inception, the basis for this decision, I was informed, was found in the tenets of Chapter 32B, Section 9B, which states that upon the death of a retiree, the surviving spouse would be required to pay 100% of the premiums going forward, however, there's a caveat there that says, unless you adopt Section 9D, 9D provides, of Chapter 32B, provides for the continuation of the 50% payment for surviving spouses, the position of the district at this point in time is that no record of a vote of the district school committee can be found showing the district adopted this section of Chapter 32B, in my conversation with Dr. Davis, I pointed out that back in the late 80s, early 90s, a former member of the Blackstone Board of Selectmen had an article on the Blackstone Town Meeting warrant, seeking to repeal Section 9A of Chapter 32B, which provided for the 50% for the coverage for medical and dental for retirees, at that time, I can tell you, I did an intensive search of the district archives, I would do it an hour, an hour and a half at a time as I had an opportunity, trying to find when the district adopted 9A, I was unable to do so, and I so explained that to the town meeting members, but assured them that the practice had been in effect since the founding of the district, and the article was summarily rejected by the voters, curiously, both 9A and 9D were adopted by the Massachusetts Legislature prior to the creation of the district as a school system, 9A was passed in 1959, and 9D was passed in 1967, I began to work in this district for the town of Blackstone, the Blackstone Public Schools in 1962, all of you, I think, maybe with Perry, except with the exception of Perry, were but a twinkle in God's eye at that time, however, Kennedy was president, I can assure you he was, and I started to work for the town of Blackstone then, in 1978, I became the Assistant Superintendent under Tom Cullen, I served in that position first under Tom and later under Aldo Chaky until 2001, when I became the Superintendent, one of my duties during that time was to handle the various aspects of the district's insurances, I can assure the committee that we operated under the tenets of 9A and 9D during that time, and I was told upon my arrival to the district that this was the district's practice, now, keep in mind that at that time, we had three school districts, we had the Blackstone Public Schools, the Millville Public Schools, and we had the district which ran grade seven through 12, I have no doubt in my mind that the district school committee adopted these precepts, and have no idea why a record is not available, but keep in mind, this was more than four decades ago, and I'm sure there are probably other records which might be difficult to find, in the 90s, we formed a consortium melding the two towns with the district to collectively purchase insurance, Blackstone was not paying anything for retirees at the time, and elected not, to continue not to do so, Millville, however, opted to mirror the district and I believe adopted 9A and 9D, around that same time, I had approached the district school committee with a request to allow the half dozen or so teachers who had retired from the town of Blackstone prior to full regionalization in 1982, and who were paying 100% of their coverage for healthcare, to be transferred to the district's plan and therefore pay 50%, I believe one of them is still alive and still paying 50%, that committee headed by Frederick J. Stone unanimously agreed, and I offer this to you as further support of the district's concern for its retirees, I can assure you that the committees that existed back then, starting with the, the late Charles F. Sullivan Senior, late Raymond E. Trotia, Fred Stone, who I mentioned, they took their responsibility seriously, and I'm sure that, that no administrator would ever put this into effect without their approval, not if he knew what was good for them, in the past, when retirees went into retirement, obviously, they took an expensive, expensive family plan into retirement, which was modified with the legislature and not, as of January 1st, 2012, mandated based on Chapter 18A of the chapter, of Chapter 32B, Section 18A, excuse me, that any retiree of a public entity who is eligible for Medicare, either on their own or through a spouse's eligibility, must go on Medicare and also buy a supplementary plan, so in education, what you're going to see is that the majority of people who are in education have not worked enough quarters to be eligible for Medicare on their own, but in many cases, most cases perhaps today, their spouses have worked the 40 quarters, so even though they retire under the district's plan, where, you know, you were paying 75 and they were paying 25, and now they go to 50%, if they're 65 years of age, they got to, they have to go on Medicare, it's not a multiple choice, I want to do it, they have to do it, and because of that, in cases like Tom Fury, where he, you know, was perhaps eligible through his wife, Margaret, the district saves considerable amount of money, I think Dr. Davis passed out a sheet tonight which shows you, you got 113 people on MedX too, the cost is $131.77, run down any of those and say, what if, what if those 113 were dispersed among the others, how much would it be costing the district, I offer that as perhaps another reason to look at this and say, yeah, you know, it's not really a bad deal, it's actually pretty good, it doesn't cost the district nickel or one more for Mrs. Fury, or Mrs. Layden, who I believe has been on the plan, Perry, for four years, and she'll get knocked off July 1st, am I right, and Susan Decker, who tragically died this past year as well, I believe her husband's on the plan, I think those are the only three, I could be wrong on that, but I think those are the only three that are on it, so keeping them on there, particularly if they're on the Medicare plan, it doesn't cost any more than it did when Mr. Fury was alive, in fact, it costs less, because they have individual plans, Mrs. Fury was on that plan as an individual, Mr. Fury was on that plan as an individual, interestingly, when the spouse who's eligible for Medicare dies, the feds don't kick you off Medicare, they leave you on there, just proof of thought, so honestly, you reconsider your present stance and reaffirm any action you may find necessary, this may seem a little macabre, but I'm going to offer it anyway, I was at the cemetery on Memorial Day, as many of you probably were, and I recalled that a former member of the, of the employment, who had employment in the district, I, I remember that his grave site was near where my father-in-law and mother-in-law are buried, so I went looking for it and I found it, and the reason I, I took a picture of it, because I just want to substantiate the fact, and I'm sure the office manager would verify this, that this individual died in 1997, his wife stayed on the plan for two more years, till 1999, and that was before across Medicare plans were, were in effect, so I'll just submit this to you and pass it around and you guys can do whatever, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, any questions, comments from the committee?
I just have, I have a comment and, I guess a question, you know, when you look at this sheet that Dr. Davis handed out, the, the costs are all over the place, from a high of 1,054.35 to a low of 118, and I'm just wondering why such a disparate, please.
And as, as Mr. Hartnett indicated, the top plan is a MedX, that's a supplemental plan, the retirees collecting, and they're in the Medicare program, so that is the low, low cost, the plans below, you start getting, you start getting into people that are not Medicare eligible because of their age, they may have retired from the district, but they're not yet eligible at 65.
Some of them might not ever be eligible, because they don't have enough quarters.
Yeah, if they had not, if they had been in public, had been in public service prior to 86, they never paid the Medicare surcharge, and they didn't have a spouse that was Medicare eligible, that's correct, so they don't have that option, so when you look down this list, some of the, some of the retirees, because of their age, are still opting, they have to be in one of our other plans, and therefore, those plans are significantly higher, and, and that's the reason, generally because of their age, but it could also be somebody that did not qualify for, for quarters in, for Medicaid.
I just add also to Dr. Davis's comments that people who are on Medicare, there's A and B, Part A and Part B, Part A is free, that's basically hospitalization, Part B, they pay for, so in addition to the 131.77, they pay somewhere between 100 and 104 dollars a month, that they pay that either out of their social security, out of their social security check if they get any one, or they pay it quarterly to the, to the Social Security, to the Medicare Association, or whatever it's called, Medicare Insurance Fund.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I just have a question, is this the total payment, or is this the portion that the person pays, or the portion that, is this the 50% or that's?
This, this represents 50%, so what you see on that sheet, in the first column is the number, now, the reason that number's large, because as, as, as Mr. Hartnett pointed out, a retiree who's on Medicare, husband and wife, there's two plans.
Correct.
Because all MedX plans are individual plans, the monthly premium is 131.77, that equals a monthly payment of 14,891, for us as well as the retirees.
Right.
Times 12 months gets us to that 178, so.
But if you didn't have that, if you didn't have that, you would take, probably you'd say, that 113, many of them, would go down to the, maybe the HMO2 and the PPO2, you can see what those differences would be.
Okay, all right, anything else, comments, no, okay, well, thank you, we appreciate the information.
Do you, well, before we leave, because do you think 9D can be approved, what can, what can happen from here, that's what I, as the unit president, I want to know, I have talked to Perry about this, other things, the financial impact upon those, those three people would be 15,000 dollars, 15,000 dollars for the year, that's the only difference, I, I know you're looking at the grand scheme, but the, the people who are, who affected right now, I want to give out some, some other points, just my background history, I'm a graphic designer, I came here when you guys hired me, I know computers, that's why I teach the kids, part of my class is also knowing print shop, in the print shop, we do a lot of things down there, one of the things we do is, we make the handbooks, I didn't really know how to do any of this stuff, there was a guy sitting there, and he just gave his time, and he showed me how to use all this equipment, we now do the handbook now, that one project that we do, that I could have never done, saves the district about 9,000 dollars, that person was Dick Layden, Julia Layden is, is one of the people that could be affected, I know this is, and like I said, Perry told me, we're worried about the long-term financial impact, when I become eligible for this, that's about 20 years from now, that's when I'm going to retire, about 20 years, if you look back 20 years, I think you could have got a good analysis on insurance in this company, in this country, that we would never have universal healthcare, because that's never going to happen, because First Lady Hillary Clinton, she tried to get it passed, and the government basically said no, and, and people actually wrote her off, she'll have no future political career, well, both of those things have changed, I understand that you have to worry about financial impact long-term, but with insurance, that is ever-changing, we don't know what it's going to be long-term, so it really is a short-term thing here, and we do feel like we've already negotiated this sometime a long time ago, we know we got a letter back saying that maybe in a negotiation, we feel it's done, so is there any way, we feel, correct me if, Fred, if I'm wrong, but if 9D was approved, everything could go on, is there any way we could do that, that's why we were hoping to get it on the agenda, and I know it isn't on the agenda, because it needed to be on the agenda.
Honestly, it's not going to happen tonight, Mark.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, I want to be honest about that, you know, I think our response was clear in terms of just finding that documentation, what you provided tonight is going to be more food for thought for this committee, so I can assure you that we're going to take everything that you said under advisement and, and clearly review it again, and, and move forward with, with, with an answer, it might be the same answer, but, but I'm going to hold out a little bit and say, we're going to review it again, okay, is that, is that fair enough?
Nope, that's fair.
I would just like to add one other comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if, I don't know if all three of them are on Medic, are on Medicare or not, but if they are, I think the cost for, for the three of them for a year is more like 4,800, is it not, if you take, if you take, it's, it's, you take 131 times three, you round it off to 400 bucks, times 12 is 4,800, so it's not a king's ransom, that's for sure, and as, you know, as I said, without being totally redundant here, you know, there's a savings by those people being in that particular pool that they're in, you know.
Okay, thank you, Mark, thank you.
Okay.
There's another public forum person out there.
Sorry?
There's another public forum person out there.
We're still in public forum, so if anyone else would like to come up?
My name is Margaret Skian, and I taught for 36-plus years at the John F. Kennedy School, I retired three years ago with a clear understanding that I thought going forward, that not only would my insurance be paid at that rate, but also that of my husband's, you know, you see three gentlemen sitting here, served the district, I think, you know, the figure came out somewhere around 40 years, people sitting behind me have served probably, I don't know how many are there, but I'm going to say probably close to 1,000 years, and I think that this is a benefit that we all believed we had, you operate, the district operated that way for all those years, and I feel something's been taken away from us, I respect Dr. Davis's argument, you know, and, and attempt to save money and help the people in the town, but I think you've done a disservice to the retirees in this decision, and I do hope that you will reconsider, and we operate as if it was there, there's no proof that it was rejected, there's no proof that it was accepted, the fact, you know, we're, we're operating on more or less circumstantial evidence, we've operated this way for 40 years, our hope is that it will continue, and that you will reconsider and reconsider the people that gave all these years to the district and retired with the belief that this is what was going to happen, and, you know, on, you know, Dr. Davis, having been here a year, I recognize that you're leaving, but, you know, it's, it's causing a wound.
Could I clarify, none of this was done for the budget, as the new, as an interim superintendent, I simply looked at this, all right, and the question got raised, and I consulted legal counsel, legal counsel, Mr. Gould, who's been with the district a long time, said this is a non-deligible right, you as a superintendent cannot grant this to an employee, the only party that can do it is the collective committee, is, that's the conundrum, where you can't find, can't find in any minutes, in any place, where this committee, as an entity, adopted the statute, and that's what's before the committee.
Right.
I had no authority to grant something that I, that he had never approved, so that's the reason it was raised, that's the reason I brought it to Mr. Juber's attention, and, you know, worked with Mr. Gould, had been in touch with Mr. Hartnett to say, Fred, if you found an era, you know, let's go back and look together to see if we could find it, or whatever, and efforts have been done to do that.
Right, I recognize that, and I, I don't want to think.
I just want to be clear, this is not, this is not a budget issue, you know, from the perspective, I didn't come here and say, oh, I could save the district money, when it, when it showed up on my desk, I consulted the lawyer, and he said, you can't do this, only the committee, and it's not, it's never been approved, and I'm like, okay, you're telling me I can't, I can't do this, so I have no legal authority to do it, and that's why I brought it to everybody's attention, so.
No, I appreciate that, and I, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying the fact that it happened under your watch.
Yes, it did.
And, you know, so I guess we're, we're, we had pleaded with the committee that, you know, you will recognize that it was done for all these years, you have a gentleman here that sat in your seat and readily admit that this is how it was handled. and readily admit that this is how it was handled. And because we can't find any proof that it was accepted, we also can't find any proof that it was rejected. So, you know, this is an equitable, equitable argument in that, you know, this has been past practice. This is a benefit that we all thought we were going to enjoy in our retirement. So it came kind of as a shock mid-March to find out we were no longer going to be eligible for it. So I do hope that you will reconsider and recognize the history of what's happened. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Everett Campbell and past superintendent of schools and principal and teacher in Blackstone Millville Regional Schools for thirty-eight years. I think this is a matter of trust. Uh, when Margaret Skian worked with me for many years, I worked with her as a teacher, then as a superintendent of schools, and also as a principal. During that time period, Margaret came to me, as many teachers did, and asked me, based on this document right here, that's distributed by the MTA, to go to your business office and ask what your coverage is. I made a decision, and my wife made a decision, not to take the insurance from her school district, which she could have, because I understood that I, that she would be covered in the event of my death. That's a big decision. Now, she would still be covered. If I died today, she would have been covered by her school district. So when employees came to me, due to my four years as superintendent and two years as assistant, and asked me the question, what is my stance as far as insurance? I told them, for the past forty years, actually at that time, three and a half decades at that time, the district has a policy and a practice of granting anyone who passes away as a district employee that takes the insurance, that their spouse would also be covered for their lifetime. So that's the advice I gave to every employee that came to me during their retirement. And my policy was, as was Fred's, when a person retired in the school district, we had a meeting. They also met with the business manager, Donna Scugio, and during that time period, that's what, that's, that's what was told to them. So I think this is a matter of trust more than anything else. So for my thirty-eight years in the district and other people who have been here for, like Margaret said, thousands of years, it's a matter of trust. It's more than a matter of just, we're going to do it now, we did, you know, we're going to do something now differently than we did for the last forty years. So that's a real issue for me.
I mean, clearly it's a dilemma for us, too. We don't want to, we don't want to, we want to be trustworthy, you know? So like I said earlier, we'll definitely take this under advisement and clearly revisit it.
Yeah, one other matter I should bring up. When we prepared the budget, Fred taught me, Fred Hartman taught me, when you give the committee the budget, make sure you list every single employee and past employee, retired employee, what the cost is. Now, the school committee has two roles, as you know, policy and budget. When the school committee approved those budgets, they in essence said, yes, we agree, that those people that are listed here, whether they be past employees or present employees, or their spouses that were being covered because their, the employee died, the, the committee approved that budget. So I think under those circumstances, you have to consider that factor. That you did approve that budget, not you particularly, but that committee approved those budgets over those years with those particular people on that budget. They were listed. It wasn't hidden. It was well documented by name, listing those employees. So I don't know how you look at that, but that's also a matter of trust. But you did adopt those budgets over those forty years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you. If this is something that we do consider in the future, how is it going to affect the two widows that are going to be affected by this in, in the short term? Is it some, maybe we, I might even have to ask legal counsel, but if it's something we approve in September and you're saying July first, um, two, two spouses are going to be affected.
Well, let me clarify. When I say we consider, I think we have to give an answer to these people before July first.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no, there's no September.
I agree.
I think we have to have something by July first, an answer, whether it's our same answer or a different answer.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I just answer the question?
I agree.
Dr. Davis, could I, I want to put you on the spot, but you had a similar situation in Dover Sherwin. You want to talk about that? What did you have to do there? You did something about that, really, right?
When I was superintendent in Dover Sherwin, the, uh, school committee had to clarify this issue and they did vote to, um, to adopt nine D.
Thank you.
So, but it, but again, the only group that, that can adopt nine D is the members of the school committee.
Absolutely.
Not the superintendent.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, we have a lot of authority, but we don't have, look, the statute says it's a district committee. They're not referring to me as the superintendent.
But we have not actually voted to reject it. We, we haven't voted.
We haven't done any at all.
We haven't done any.
Correct.
There's no, there's no record of it ever being adopted. There's no, there's no question that there has been, in the past, surviving spouses that have been put on. The letters that went out to those people were always signed by a secretary, not an administrator.
So, so if and when we want to revisit this, hopefully soon before July first?
We'll get a revisit at our next meeting.
Okay.
So it'll be the twenty, twenty-sixth, I believe?
Twenty-sixth.
So between now and the twenty-sixth, we'll have to review everything that's said here now. And then twenty-sixth, we have to give an answer, a clear answer, but this is how we're moving forward.
Great.
Is that fair enough?
So it's going to be on the agenda.
It'll be on the agenda.
Yeah, so this will be on the agenda for the twenty-sixth of June, and we'll have a decision that night.
Can I, before, before we leave this, can I just mention one thing? I see a lot of handshakes and a lot of hugs out there and a lot of smiles. I hope it doesn't take something like this to get you people all together, because you look like you really enjoy each other's company, so.
They're going to read that book later on before.
You guys want to come in, in public forum? I don't think you're hearing the retirement issue, right?
There's about to be a little change of pace, I guess.
All right, keep going, yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for having us. It's our pleasure to be here to talk about something that's near and dear to our hearts. Uh, my name is Chris Coffin. I graduated in two thousand and twelve from BMR and I've since gone to Lehigh University where I'm studying finance. Brett, if you want to introduce yourself?
Uh, yeah, my name's Brett Buskey. I graduated BMR in two thousand and eleven. I'm currently a senior at Dartmouth College.
All right. So, um, the reason we're here today is actually because one of the fondest memories we both have of our times at BMR and, uh, something that we could definitely reflect on in the meeting as something that is, one of the greater things that the BMRSD School District has to offer is our athletics program. And, uh, for us, one of the greatest parts of the athletics program was our, one of our track and field coaches, Coach Kevin Maloney. And, um, so since, since graduating, Brett and I have both gone on to compete in Division One Athletics. And we both feel as though our coaching from Kevin has, has been a major cause of that. So, uh, the reason I'm here tonight is we both feel as though it would be an appropriate action after you hear about, uh, our rationale behind it to actually dedicate, uh, the BMR Track and Field to Kevin and dedicate the Kevin Maloney Track and Field. So Brett, if you'd want to.
Yeah, um, so I'm know most of you guys know probably at least who Kevin Maloney is. He was originally a guidance counselor for BMR who worked, I believe, around thirty-five years or so, and he recently retired in two thousand and nine. Since retiring, Mr. Maloney has continued to serve the BMR student athletes as a coach on the cross-country team and both the indoor and outdoor track and field teams. His history is a lot deeper than that. I'd like to kind of just go over a couple of awards and achievements that he's accomplished. It's kind of a long list, so I had to kind of print it out. I apologize for that, but, um.
Actually, Brett, before you jump in, what I did is, um, you give me this, I ran it off, so they all have that in their hands right now.
Oh, they do?
A little background for you.
Oh, okay.
Feel free to go for it.
Okay, yeah, so just, I guess we can just top it off. For over thirty-five years or so, he's been coaching the track and field team, starting in nineteen seventy-six. Thirty-four years, he's been coaching cross-country. Two years coaching middle school girls' basketball and one year coaching JV baseball. He even started his own middle school running club. He was honored twice as the U.S. Region One Coach of the Year by the National High School Federation of High Schools, one in the New England area and one in the New York area. He was also in, inducted into the Massachusetts Track Coaches Association Hall of Fame, as well as the, uh, BMR Athletics Hall of Fame. At BMR, he's coached several district championship teams and athletes who have been both state and New England champions. At one point, he coached our cross-country team to hold the record of most consecutive cross-country wins in state history. I don't know how many times that's been beaten.
It's, it's been beaten once by one team.
All right, so it's been beaten once.
But, but the cross-country, I think they won something like a hundred and ninety-seven meets in a row?
Yeah.
Something like that. They were undefeated for like five years running, which is crazy.
He also played, uh, he played an integral role in coaching athletes who have gone on to compete collegiately at a Division One level also, including myself, Chris, Jake Begnoch, and Eric Quitzaw.
In recent time, yeah. So Coach Maloney has not only been an excellent coach, but a mentor and a friend. His tireless and selfless dedication to the sport of track and field and the countless teams and athletes he's worked with has been inspirational. Despite being paid very little and even sometimes splitting his pay with, uh, other coaches so that there's more coaching staff, he's devoted dozens of hours a week and over seventy-five plus seasons to practice time, track maintenance, and of course giving up weekends to spend time at meets. Coach Maloney doesn't only bring his sports knowledge to practice every day, but also brings his infectious humor, polished wisdom, and engaging love for the sport. I like to think of it as, uh, it takes someone special to love to run, but it takes someone even more special to, to coach kids to run. Without a doubt, Coach Maloney has been one of the nicest, most genuine and inspiring men I've ever met. And, uh, several of Coach Maloney's athletes and myself have unanimously, unanimously come to the conclusion that there'd be no better way to honor all that he's done for us than to, uh, dedicate the high school track in his name, the Kevin Maloney Track. And, um, as, as you guys have been handed out, we just have a little recommendation of what we could do. We have a ma, like, we based our recommendation off of some of my findings, uh, from tracks around. It's a mounted plaque and it would be funded personally and by some donations from Mr. Maloney's Track, uh, past athletes. And that about wraps things up, so.
Sounds great. I've, I've been talking, you know, been volleying back and forth emails and phone calls with Chris. And, um, yes, he has done some research and I think something like this is a good idea. Chris and I had talked about maybe getting the current athletes here, but actually at this moment, they're at their track banquet over at the, otherwise we could have filled the room with, uh, you know, you know. I think anyone who knows, uh, BMR, they know two things, the band and track, cross-country. And, um, you know, it's too bad Buddy is retiring this year. We could do a similar thing for Buddy Bebo. But I think, you know, Kevin Maloney, I think this would be a tremendous honor for him.
Where's the banquet? They could run over here.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of far for some of us. So we definitely feel as though it would be an appropriate action.
Chris, is this, is this the, the, is this the style you're looking at, something like that?
Yeah, that is the style.
This is the style.
For the price range that I, I think would be appropriate, that's approximately.
The ground or the wall?
Not, not the wall one. It's actually the mounted.
The wall is the verbiage on the walls, which you were trying to get across, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And this is the, but this would be the appearance and you're talking about the hill right next to where the, the paved areas, is that right?
There's this little ramp going up there.
Yeah, right next to the ramp, kind of in that area.
Yeah, I didn't want to get any official quotes before we had permission, you know, to proceed from the board. But generally, yeah, the area to the right of, uh, the incline to the entrance would be where we were looking to put it.
And one of the things I was talking with Chris about is the timing of when to do this. You know, I'm not sure how quickly these things can be produced. It probably would take a while. So one of the things we're thinking about is maybe doing is having, you know, the announcement soon, but maybe the actual dedication might be in the fall when we have homecoming weekend. And I think there might be a nice tie-in. I don't know if the date is set for that. It's probably sometime in October.
Yeah, I think, uh, to play off of that idea, I think, uh, during the halftime of the homecoming football game or something like that would be an outstanding idea.
Great. So I'm looking for a motion.
Do you want to put this on your agenda for the next meeting or do you wish to take a motion to?
What, what is the pleasure of the committee?
I'd like to, I, I know I've been playing both sides of the fence here, but I'd like the, a motion to rename the, uh, BMR Track, the Kevin Maloney Track. Details to be worked out still, but I think just the, I think maybe just the spirit of naming the track in his name.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Tringali, seconded by Jane. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. It's not named anything right now, right? Like, we're not changing some poor person's name to a name.
We're not paving over anybody.
Okay. And, and, and there's no district policy on how you get to name something?
You do have a, you do have a district policy and it does require a vote of the committee.
But that's, okay.
Correct.
I'm, I'm good.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, some are saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? Unanimous. There we go.
Awesome. Thank you guys for your time.
I would only ask the gentleman if you'd be in touch with the superintendent's office so that we can coordinate, you know, the, the, uh, installation and the wording and whatever.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you again.
Thank you. Very good. Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving forward. School committee.
I didn't sign to the school committee, Mr. Chairman, I, I probably just to recap, uh, appearance before the Millville Board of Selectment on Monday night. We left that meeting with the understanding that the town of Millville will tomorrow night move to sign a warrant to establish a date for a special town meeting, which I believe is Monday, June thirtieth, to go forward. And, uh, budget that's been recertified after the, um, Blackstone Town Meeting was the one that was submitted to them. And again, that, the date of that recertification of the budget started the forty-five day clock counting towards Millville taking action. And it was agreed at that meeting that that date is midnight on, on, on July, uh, the twelfth. Okay, so we're working within a timeframe of where we need to go. The members of the Millville may want to attend that selectmen's meeting tomorrow night, just to see if that's how they're moving forward.
Thursday.
Thursday night, I'm sorry.
That is tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, thank you. In terms of that, I have not had any correspondence or communication with the finance committee.
They're actually meeting tonight.
They're meeting tonight. I did receive an email from Mr. Raposa, the, um, Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen, because as you know, we had a discussion with the Board of Selectmen on the state budget. Particularly the Senate version of the budget is increasing regional transportation aid. And the House budget is what we recertified, too. And the discussion was around taking a look at what, what would possibly be the actual number for regional transportation aid. And as I explained that night, the House and the Senator in Conference Committee, they will be reporting out a budget. And it could go anywhere between the fifty million in the House budget to the seventy million in the Senate. Usually in Conference Committee, that means they somehow meet in the middle to do that. But again, until that's voted, uh, it's not a done deal and it has to be submitted to the governor. And the, uh, thinking of Representative Kiroz, I saw him last Friday along with Senator Moore, is that probably the governor is going to get the budget sometime beginning of July. He has, uh, a, a number of days to act on the budget, so we probably won't see a state budget until mid-July. Some, somewhere between probably the tenth and the fifteenth, probably closer to the fifteenth. So with that being said, Mr. Raposa, in his email that I forwarded to you, raised the question, as a matter of good faith, would the regional committee consider acknowledging if, if the regional transportation comes in higher, would you recertify the budget? It doesn't take any money away from teachers because it's coming in as regional transportation aid. And the effect would be it would lower the assessment to the town. The split on that, if we were to use the Senate numbers, I put a sheet in front of your, with that. The, the recertified budget would mean that the town of Blackstone would, would pay eighty-three thousand one ninety-six less and the town of Millville thirty-two thousand nine oh one, for a total of a hundred and sixteen oh ninety-seven. How that would work, just to be clear, we don't write the towns a check because we don't get those payments for our regional transportation. Traditionally, we get one in January and one towards the end of June. But if you recertified your budget at the time that we knew that that number was real, the assessments to the town, which are done quarterly, would be lowered. So the town would get this money divided over the four payments. All right? And again, I would not recommend to this committee, you assume the Senate number. Because I, you don't want to count revenue that has not been voted in by law. But on the other hand, I think Mr. Raposa was raising the issue of, as a matter of good faith, if in fact there's going to be more money coming to the region, would you pass that through to the respective towns? So it's something to ponder and to think about. But I wanted you to see the facts and the numbers as to, as to how that would, would proceed. So I, I bring that forward, you know, for your, for your discussion. Again, you can't adopt a recertified budget because this is not a real number. It could be. And, uh, what he's really requested is, as a sign of good faith, in, in the event... in the event the legislature in approving the FY fifteen state budget were to increase regional transportation aid, that the district would recertify its budget to in fact pass along that additional aid through the assessment formula. All right?
So any comments or questions? I'm going to.
I want to recap it in my head.
So really, in reality, you're recapping this.
Let me recap first. So sometime in July, our governor will, will come up with a, whatever the number is.
Yes.
Okay, whatever that number is, if it's higher than what we've put in here, what we will do is, what, what's, what you're putting out there, Dr. Davis, is we would then come back and recertify the higher number.
Correct.
Into regional transportation. What then will happen is the assessments, what we, what, if we do that, the assessments that we send them would therefore be lowered by the, the amount that Dr. Davis just had. So it has nothing to do with Millville approving thirty-two thousand dollars less. They still have to approve what is certified today and on the thirtieth. Okay? So the good faith gesture that you're talking about would just be lowered within both towns' assessments with the added increase in the, in the, in the transportation number. Right, Dr.?
Correct. And again, regional transportation is a state aid, even if we weren't to recertify the budget. That doesn't become available to us to spend. That flows into E and D, which you would then use in fiscal sixteen budget. Okay? So it's not like cash that we get.
Right.
That we could go out and, and, and not cut to teachers. Okay? It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way.
So what I was, what I was going to add is, in reality, had the House come through with this number from the get-go, we would have certified at a lower number to begin with for, for the towns.
Right, if the House didn't come up at all and say that the governor's number?
No, I'm saying they had come in at five, at our estimate of five hundred and sixty-seven.
When we recertified, when we recertified our budget on May eighth, we went to the House number, which was higher than the number when you certified your budget back in March.
But typically, we wouldn't be recertifying midsummer.
Correct.
Because these are usually done.
Correct. Right, it's just, under the tight, tight budget, fiscal circumstances that we're hearing in Millville, every penny counts. And again, this is not a guarantee this money's going to be here.
Right.
And, and it is a good faith gesture to both towns, to both towns. So we don't need to make a decision on that, that's just a discussion tonight.
Correct. I, I just, you know, because Mr. Rapo, he apologized, he normally does, is at all our meetings, but. He has another meeting. But I, I do think he's raised the question. And, and, you know, certainly, it's been a long time since the state has actually attempted to raise regional transportation. You know, it's incremental, maybe it's a million dollars, which, which turns around to us at a few thousand dollars. But between fifty, you know, between fifty million in the House budget and seventy million in the, in the state budget, that's twenty million, that's real money. That's why you see this number at about a hundred and seventeen thousand. So it, it's, it's been a long time since I've seen that kind of an increase in regional transportation aid. So FYI, and just wanted to bring it forward to the committee.
Any other thoughts, discussion?
I have a question. So if we, if we weren't to do this, good faith gesture, and we did get that money, that money would go where, into E and D?
No, if you took the vote to recertify the budget, our assessments to the towns would be less.
Would be less.
By those numbers.
Okay.
We would not, we would not send a check to any town. We would simply recertify the budget and the treasurers would actually send us less money. So they would have the money at, at the town level.
Is there any concern with setting a past practice with this, past precedent or anything like that? In future years, if we're in a situation where, you know, something similar comes up, the numbers are a little bit different in, in different ways from the town's perspective and from our perspective.
The regional transportation aid is your money. And in, and you always pass through to the towns what you anticipate you're going to get in regional transportation aid.
So it's really just a number that affects the assessment that goes out to them? It's always that separate category?
It doesn't affect your operating budget. It affects your, it affects the transportation line item, which in effect, you know, impacts the assessment.
I think what you're saying is, are we establishing, this is going to be a practice going forward, or this is a one, this year only in recognition of?
Again, typically, regional districts, when they set their budget, we get a preliminary budget from the state and we take the number that's in, it's, it's usually in the House budget and we, we use that number in, in planning your, your regional transportation aid.
And, and this wouldn't be an issue if their timeline was a little earlier. We wouldn't be talking about it. You know what I mean? If the, well, we know that. So I mean, I do think that one of our priorities this year in moving forward is building trust with, with, with the towns. Changing the perception that, you know, what's behind the window and what's behind the curtain and the, and the books and so forth. So I mean, I think this is something we should really consider when it happens. I think we bring it back here and we make the decision. Does that make, that make sense to everybody?
The next item in the, in the packet is just an update on where we are with what I'm calling the four hundred thousand scenario, but based, this is the Blackstone approved assessment at this point. I put a new memo in there and I want to update. If you look at that list, we had talked about going from three special ed team chairs to two. We're now, I'm now recommending that we stay with three. And the reason for that is working with the leadership team and working with Dr. Hahe. We can take the money that's budgeted for the out-of-district coordinator to do the out-of-district. We've also had a reduction because of a move-out of our vision integration specialist. So we can reduce that position from a full position to a point six. So we now picked up two pieces and there's been some other changes with some of the people in the special ed staff. A school psychologist has taken a job in another district. We can put that money back and, and we can fund three team chairs. The configuration will be slightly different than it has been. We will be going to a pre-K to three model and then a four to eight model and then a nine to twelve plus the out-of-district. And that keeps those numbers pretty proximate.
Can you repeat that again?
Pre-K to three, to grade three.
Four to eight, nine to twelve?
And then middle, the four to, four to eight, four to eight, and then nine to twelve with the out-of-district. And the, here they are. The projected caseload at the pre-K to three would be a hundred and three, the four to eight would be a hundred and five, and at the nine to twelve, it would be ninety-one. But keep in mind, there are twenty of those cases that the person has to travel.
So the nine to twelve person would have the out-of-district.
Correct. Yes.
Could Dr. Hahe verify for us, is that how it used to be? Was it, was the, the high school out-of-district or did the grade levels have their own out-of-district?
Please, Paul. It predates me, I don't know.
I know. I believe there was a change a year after he got here.
I'm changing what you've got.
So these, these are the knowns right now in terms of where we are. It does not include referrals. This is what we know and the configuration is rolled out. To your question about the out-of-district coordinator, Ms. Pelle Galorani is always overseeing out-of-district in concert with the director on the more difficult cases where we would, you know, need additional advisement, legal or otherwise. She would work with the director, no matter who that was. She would always work with them. But she was in charge, she oversaw out-of-district. That was a big part of her job.
Pre-K to twelve.
She oversaw the whole thing. If it was, if it, if we had ten, it was ten. If it was twenty, it was twenty. If it was more or less, she was in charge of that and she had done it for a very long time prior to my arrival. So in July of two thousand and eleven, when I got here, you know, it was one of the things, we had a CPR that we were trying to button up and we worked together on that. Ms. Pelle Galorani was very instrumental in that. And she kind of had made sure things were the way they needed to be. But a big piece in the record review was the out-of-district and.
She the nine to twelve team chair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she was the nine to twelve team chair. So this isn't, she'd been historically in charge of that.
We're still saving the seventy thousand, but we're just reallocating, you know, the personnel. Yes.
So as of right now, there's twenty out-of-district?
Yes. The other item that I want to bring to the attention of the committee, under the custodian, that layoff would occur as of July one. Summer is our most busiest time for cleaning and maintenance. It's also the time that custodians take vacation. So in thinking this through, if we were to lay off a custodian, he starts collecting unemployment and then I have to dip into the overtime account to cover for men taking vacation. They, they get time and a half. It's financially beneficial for us not to reduce that custodian if we have to until September one, because we save on the unemployment claim and I don't pay time and a half because I have this extra custodian. This is the custodian that's in the budget, half-based here at the middle school, but then he floats and covers other buildings during the summer for when, when people are out.
So the adjustment is from July first?
It's just two months. It's just two months. All right? And it came to me about three o'clock in the morning, I'm thinking about unemployment and I'm trying to calculate and I'm saying, wait a minute, I'm going to have to pay overtime for coverage because in some cases, you know, we, we have to provide for the vacation time and we have work to get done, in particular because we have two roof projects, one at the high school and one at Millville Elementary. And so Donna and I, Donna ran the numbers and quite frankly, it's a net. Quite frankly, it's a net. So I would like, you know, to, again, the budget would still reflect that thirty-six thousand as a reduction, but I'd like to keep the person on for those two months. I'll dip in, I'll dip into the, the overtime account to pay for that for two months. Okay? Working with the leadership team, tomorrow, I will be issuing a posting for all of the positions. Remember, I had, I had given notice to all of our teachers with non-professional status, about fifty-eight people, that they were non-renewed because we did not know where our budget was going. I would like to post it and begin the process of bringing, of, of bringing, giving people jobs back. All right? They were never all going to be let go. Never, never, never all going to be let go. And with most of the teacher positions with people retiring or some people not coming back from child rearing leaves, we're probably, we're probably only going to have, you know, layoffs of one or two people in total. Okay?
Teachers.
Teachers, yeah.
Per building or total?
Total. Right? Because we've, we've got Mrs. Delibrio now retiring from the Blackstone Elementary at third grade, second grade moving up as a smaller cohort, so we can, we can do third grade in, in Blackstone with four sections. That allows us to keep two sections of that thirty cohort in Millville. So there is no layoff. We have a retirement. And as I said, we've gotten some retirements, I mean, not retirement, some movement of some people taking jobs in other districts. So we can fill and that's the way it looks at this point. All right? There probably will be one or two faculty that will be impacted.
You don't know where that would be yet with, with the match?
Not, one will be at the middle school. All right? One will be at the middle school for sure. The other's special ed and again, depending upon some people taking jobs in other districts, I think we're going to find places for everybody without, without having to lay somebody off. All right? They may not be working. There'll be two positions left out, coming out of the middle school. All right? One we know will be a layoff, but the other might be somebody having a job in another place. And I'm sure it's going to change even more. It's never stays the same.
So those postings or those letters?
I'm sorry?
So you repost the position?
Correct. They, they, you know.
Those aren't the letters you talked about at the meeting where they contingent on Millville?
Contract, the contingent contract.
Oh, in, in some, in, in some cases, you know, they, they would be advised in that letter, it's all contingent on the budget, budget finally being approved. But that, that really only impacts.
A few.
Very few.
Very few. Okay.
Yeah, very few at this point. Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
So what does the K aides look like? Are they two and a half? Does that mean it's two and a half?
It's two and a half full-time equivalents at the, at the Blackstone Elementary. Mrs. Brown met with the, with the kindergarten teachers.
Okay.
And what they, what they would, what they're asking for is that we keep five aides. They work three hours a day. All right?
And, and they're working during prime time morning, not taking?
They're coming in later. They will be there for the literacy and numeracy block.
Okay. So I just, I'm, I'm just concerned, I just don't want those three hours to be covered, you know, covered lunch or, you know, I think that's, that's a little concerning, but as long as that's assuring?
The, the schedule for the kindergartens at Blackstone Elementary, we would maximize those three hours around the literacy block and the numeracy block for them. That may necessitate, you know, the, the person coming in slightly later because they don't need to be there for morning meeting, but they could come. So the, the exact start time, but it'll be three hours. And that's the same, it's, it's, it's what they, when they, when the five teachers reviewed the schedule, that's what they said would be the most beneficial to do that. Okay?
Did they happen to mention what their plan's going to be for, or let me ask another question first. Are we still at seventy-nine in Blackstone? Enroll, enrollments?
No, at, at Blackstone, well, at, at Blackstone, we are anticipating kindergarten at, at a hundred.
Okay.
At a hundred, twenty, twenty.
Twenty and five.
But we're still chasing nine people. Okay?
So with that being said, twenty kids in five sections with no aides at lunch, is there another plan that they?
There's, in your budget, is a, there's a cafeteria monitor in there. Yes, I know. We're going to have to cover it internally. All right? She'll have, Carol will have to develop a plan.
Even Millville with no aides and whatever their split ends up being? Those aides are always in the cafeteria.
What, the incoming kindergarten?
It's twenty-nine?
It's twenty-nine, so one of fifteen, one of fourteen. Yeah. And there's a, there's a full-time monitor in the cafeteria. You don't have money for anything else.
And they'll just, just work on a different duty kind of rotation.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no lunch duty though, but just.
Cover the recess.
They definitely can, they definitely depend on those aides for the little people. I mean, especially the first few months, opening milk, opening, I'm just, lunch cards, lunch numbers, I'm picturing.
I'm going to disagree with you, Erin. I just think it's very important for kindergarten aides to be in the classroom servicing the children.
Oh, I'm not saying not in the classroom.
If the leadership team feels as though we need people in there, then there's parent volunteers that can come in. There's plenty of people that can come in and help out. And I, I think it's very important, you know, my concern is that, you know, they're going to be utilized in a way that they shouldn't be utilized. So I do want to make it very clear that, you know, prime time learning and I hope that it's those three hours are there for those students, you know, and maybe come and, and share with us how that looks, you know, come fall to show us how that looks. I know it's been done in the past. I know we started it that way in the past. You know, but I, I think it's really important to make sure that those aides are in the classroom and not somewhere else they need to be servicing those kids. So, you know, I would like to see what that looks like in the fall.
That was fully vetted, you know, with the discussion with Carol Brown and the five kindergarten teachers. That's why they said, give us three hours, let's, you know, not have them come in for morning meeting, but when we transition to literacy, that's when we want the aide and then we'll transition to, to numeracy and then we can do their specials in the afternoon.
And, and I think it would be important to maybe have parents come in and help during those times. Part of community and community building, you know, having those friendly faces in there during those times would be, you know, it, it would be a community building experience. So, you know, if, if that does turn into, you know, something that needs to be done, then I think we need to look for our community to help out in that, those areas.
Well, my question was, is this, did they say they had a plan without aides in the lunchroom for, for the little people? Because one lunch person isn't going to cut it.
It's probably a crazy idea, but I know in, in town of Blackstone, they have some people working off some of their taxes, working in the town hall.
Well, they have to be.
If they can pass a query, maybe we can get some of them in, in the lunchroom.
I know we have a lot of volunteers though, too. It's just reaching out and, and getting those volunteers in.
Send them a letter, send something home to the parents.
Send them a letter, send something home to the parents.
All they can say is no.
Kindergarten is a fast.
Not in the cafeteria, in the classroom.
Yeah.
In kindergarten.
So, the, the leadership team has, has looked at, you know, what's going on, but I will, I will acknowledge that we are seeing some, some ripple with faculty because of the uncertainty applying and taking interviews. So, I don't think we're done yet, you know, with some, with some, uh, potential, potential personnel shifts out there. And that's, to be, that's why I wanna get these positions posted and get the letters out. Again, I'm basing it on the fact that we're gonna move forward to closure with Mill, Millville on June thirty. That's my assumption.
So, with all, with the budget changes and the things that have happened, this is, this is definitely transpiring, the, the, okay?
This is what I'm recommending. The dollar amount stays the same.
Right.
I'm just repositioning, repositioning the reduction from a team chair, you know, position to an out-of-district coordinator because we're gonna put that as part of the high school team chair and the, uh, the vision integration person. There was a reduction there, okay? And, and to, and to do that, alright? And then, as I said, the custodian will stay at thirty-six, but quite frankly, better to have somebody working this summer than, than paying overtime and, and unemployment to do that. And then take a look at it when it all comes, comes about, when the budget's approved. The last item is the whole issue that I have to start developing the documentation for the Commissioner of Education because we do have to appeal to the Commissioner because June thirty is too close to July one. I need to get the documentation to the Commissioner that there's a possibility we won't have a budget for July one and therefore be poised to have him approve a one-twelfth budget for us. So, uh, it's attached in there, the protocol that I have to follow to provide documentation, and I'll have to do that. And get that out. Alright?
Is there anything else in the budget people wanna talk about and bring up?
Um, I just had one other question that I emailed the other day, but, um, maybe it was too deep into my email. Um, do you know what we've spent year-to-date on the custodian overtime account? Because we had nothing skipped.
Donna did that number for me, I did not bring it.
Okay.
She did do that. I asked her about it. I, I, no, I, I, I know she did it, I did not bring it.
Okay. Because we did not have anything budgeted and I'm just curious where. And I grazed this, but I couldn't pull it out.
Um, no, you, it, it, she was doing a separate, uh, we had budgeted in the, in the budget ten thousand dollars for snow removal, which is also, that's overtime, alright? We exceeded that a little, by a little bit, alright? And she did do that, I honestly, that's my error. I asked her to do it, she did it, and I did not, I did not put it in my packet to bring tonight. I can get that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, just to clarify, we've had some overtime, particularly at JFKFM, but that was associated with the roof project and that was under the roof contract, that's separate.
Okay.
You know, when the contractor wanted to build, when he wanted the building open on a Saturday, the, the roof contract had had to pay for that overtime.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Any other discussion on the budget?
I did ask and I did get it, but I forgot it.
Any other questions in terms of, I know people have had questions, so now's the time to do it, an open session about, you know, talking about, um, I mean, the budget's ours. This is a guide for us. So, now would be the time to have the beginning discussion of that, so we can get it going, so we can, we can move forward.
I, I, go ahead Erin, I mean Jane.
I just, the, the library, I noticed the library, high school librarian, or it says library, but I assume it's librarian is still in here. Is that a, um, I know it's been asked and I'm just not sure of the answer. Is that an accreditation issue when it comes time to, um?
Yes. It will be an accreditation issue. We're not being accredited, visited next year.
In two thousand fifteen?
Right. It's a, it's a year away.
It'd be the sixteen, fifteen, sixteen year? But do they look back and say, well, you didn't have it before?
Well, we've reported it because the position is not there this year.
Oh.
So, last year when that position was reduced, Mr. Dudak had to notify the New England Association of Schools and Colleges that we did not have that position. And they notified us that we were not following the standard and therefore, you know, he needed to keep them, yep, informed. But the real crunch is when they come and visit.
We need to have somebody.
So, we're just kicking it, we're kicking the can down the road, so to speak. Yes.
So, at some point in time, we have to read.
But however, however, the worst-case scenario is they're gonna say, you don't have a librarian. Please have a corrective action over the next five years. So, I, I work at a high school, we don't have a librarian.
Okay.
And they came and visited us last year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they said, hm, hm, hm. So, they're going through their own little, um, issues right now.
So, it's not a make or break?
I don't think it's a make or break.
Okay.
No. But it definitely has to be addressed in, in the, in the next budget. Yes. Alright?
Wendy?
Um, I know I keep bringing this up, athletics, um, a cut of ten thousand.
Yeah.
Um, and looking at, you know, a counselor at twenty-three thousand and just, just, that's a huge concern of mine. Um, the, the JFKAFM part-time FTE counselor, twenty-three, um, versus, you know, cutting in athletics. I, I honestly just feel, um, and, and I'm not speaking upon, you know, cutting any sports and I know this is, you know, i- it's a tiring issue, but twenty-three thousand dollars is, is the amount that's in this budget for, you know, supplies and, and it concerns me when, you know, in, in a crunch that we're in right now, um, you know, I, I, I feel that that can wait. I feel that's something that can be in a plan, you know, that, that's put out there, you know, in the following years. But, you know, my concern again is, is looking at the students and looking at, you know, that part-time position that's twenty-three thousand dollars. I, I just, I just think it should be spent somewhere other than athletic supplies. So, I, I, I just keep bringing it up because, like I said, I, I, I'm, I was a three-sport athlete and I raise money for my uniforms and I just don't feel as though every single sport or roughly eighty percent of the sports need brand-new uniforms. Um, it's just a concern of mine.
Again, if, if the athletic budget had been adequately funded for the last couple of years, you would be in a rotation. We, we keep digging ourselves in a hole, you know, relative to, to certain sports. And you, you need to have a stable budget to move forward. And, and I certainly, you know, certainly not saying if you cut twenty thousand, we're gonna devastate the athletic budget, we're not. But we're again, taking that partial step back and, you know, it just concerns me in your overall budgeting, you know, that, that if you're gonna run a program, be committed to it, like I said, you've gotta fund the coaches, you've gotta fund the buses, you've gotta fa- pay for the officials, you know, and then you gotta provide, you know, the, the, uh, equipment and materials, you know, that are needed for it.
I, I just feel as though if we had, go ahead, sorry.
Okay.
I, I just feel if, if we had a plan of action, you know, year one, this is gonna happen, year two, this is gonna happen.
That's a reasonable, you know, again, we had a, we had a brand-new athletic director that we just hired last August. You know, he teaches, uh, he has four classes, he's a part-time A.D. He had, he jumped in because we had a late resignation for a football coach, he coached, he coached the football team. I mean, the man has been juggling, juggling, juggling and I've asked him, you know, to do something that hadn't been done in a long time. Go through the inventory, see what we have and, and come back and tell me what you need. And we've already, I've already, you know, this is, this is, this budget has been pared a little bit and, and, you know, pared again. You know, down another ten thousand. I'm just cautioning, you know, let's, we just gotta get this thing back in balance.
And I, and I agree, and I wholeheartedly agree. I just, I just feel as though, you know, this year and, and, and what we're going through budget-wise, I just wish there was more of a plan, um, put into place, um, you know, in terms of, you know, I just keep saying uniforms and I keep saying, oh, because I just keep seeing it, so, you know. I'm done speaking, but I just needed to, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying take away- I'm not gonna take away, I'm not saying take away sports, I'm not saying take away any of that. I just wish it was more of a, you know, a, a, a plan of action versus, you know-
So, do you have the line item that, uh, for, for uniforms, is there a line item for uniforms?
I'll, I'll do that.
I, I, I hear what you're saying and, and there's a, I, I agree with both. You know, I think we do have to have a five-year plan to, to, to get this thing, I think the ship is righted right now um, in terms of the infrastructure of the-
Right. And I, and I agree, and I agree absolutely.
But I also hear your point of, can we develop the plan and then do the, do some of the, these things next year? I hear that.
And that's all I'm, that's all I'm just trying to say because I think in my head, you know, there's students that are in need of, of counseling or in need of these services and just as much as you're in need of a uniform. And I don't wanna weigh one against the other because I, I understand that. I, like I said, I was a three-sport athlete, I understand how important it is to, you know, look good, to have the, to have the team, you know, I understand that. But in the budget crunch that we're in, if it was just molded out or if we had some type of plan, year one, we're gonna do this, year two, we're gonna do this, I think I feel more comfortable than looking through the budget, seeing, you know, uniform, uniform, uniform. It, it just concerned me, you know, and, and it continues to concern me and I'm just, I just wanna put that out there.
But there's lots of other things. Erin, you had thrown some ideas around some of the technology things that were in there, some of the LCD projectors. So, yeah, don't think we're just picking on uniforms, we're just picking on this. I mean, we're looking at all, all these things.
Right.
So, don't, don't get the message that-
I completely echo the five-year plan.
The only thing we're picking apart is athletics. There's lots of things in there we're looking at.
Right. And, and my, my one share, my one share is, is just looking at, you know, a twenty-three thousand dollar position saying, you know, is there anything we can do to get that position back to, to help support in the academic climate? That's, that's all I'm, I'm saying, I'm not taking anything-
By the same token, how do we know we need that halftime position?
Oh, my God, Brian. It's, it's-
How many, what do we left with the staff?
There's six hundred kids in the, in the complex and, and the, the, listen, I, I, this is, this is something that, um, um, we, this is something that we worked hard from, this is the last layoffs that we went through, that was in a year, that we just last year got back, you know, as a full-time counselor at, at the high school, that's, that's, that's being chopped. You know, that we finally worked, there hasn't been a person there since two thousand six. And I know that because I was the person that was there in two thousand six.
But we had this discussion last year on starting at, at the lower, so we don't get to that point at the high school where the need is so great. And I think that's where we brought that back. So, I mean, that, that's just where my concern lies is, you know, how many psychologists do we have in the, in the?
How many, Dr. Howie? Three?
Three, for the whole district. And do they do the testing? Okay, so they do the testing and do they service children as well? And they write the reports? Okay.
And they probably represent the reports at the meetings.
And they present the reports at the meetings. So, therefore, that, there's my, there's where my concern lies. I mean, and that's just building upon, up to the, that high school level where we, we wanna nourish that environment. But I think it has to start somewhere and, and we have to support that environment. And like I said-
Everyone here agrees that we need those, those positions.
Right.
None, we, we don't wanna ch- we don't wanna give it to anyone.
No, but I, I have a problem. Every time we, we, it's great to justify the need for something, but it seems like every time, whether it's in this committee or with the town committees, it's always, we need to look at the sports. And I'm just curious as to why sports keeps coming up. We, we just raised, hold on a second, we just raised the parent contribution last year significantly to fund sports.
Yep.
We've recognized we have a new director who's gonna reevaluate this, but I just, it just seems like, you know, this is a big population of kids who participate in our sports.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think she's saying to get rid of sports. I think that, that's why I said there's one-
She said sports.
I didn't say anything about getting rid of sports.
No, you didn't, no, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying you talked about the budget.
Well, I, I'm just sharing one of the pieces. If you'd like me to share more, I'll share more.
I think what I asked you to do was a specific line item around uniforms that you said. Now, the question that I had, the same as Wendy, is when were the new uniforms bought last? Was it ten years ago? Alright, I'm, I'm for it.
But we could go through that on, on a lot of these supply budgets.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But what I'm concerned about is it always comes up with sports.
I think because-
It comes up, it comes up with sports all the time. It does.
And I think because sports had the greatest percentage increase because it probably wasn't shown before.
Right, it was on the chart.
So, and I think you have to remember, it wasn't shown before, so if it was purchased by end-of-the-year money, let's get these things in or, or whatever. But it is really hard to see, um, two hundred and fifty pairs of socks. I mean, you know, it's just really hard to say, two hundred and fifty pairs of socks.
Understand it, I guess. And I-
But on the same hand, we never talk about music. We never talk about music.
We, we're gonna talk about a lot of areas.
And we're buying a piano, a keyboard, a piano, again. And we bought it, it was in the budget last year and we're buying it again. Two pianos?
But again, there might be a five-year plan or we'll buy, like cruises.
We need to know that five-year plan. I think that five-year plan should be coming from-
And that's really all I'm just, that's really all I'm sharing is, is if there was a plan, I, I'd be fine with it. I mean, just like, like Jane said, it's just hard to see that number, to, to see that number, you know?
But it's, it's not just music or sports. Again, it should be technology, it should be all, all these things. So, yeah, we, we don't think we're picking any one over the other.
Technology budget is significantly down.
Yes, it is.
For next year. Because I said there was no plan.
Right. Yep.
Okay, so I could not bring back to you technology budget without a plan.
Right.
Okay, so that number is really a maintenance budget to replace equipment. So, I'd strongly suggest that's not a place you wanna go looking to cut because what's in there is, is to replace. It's not any, you know, grand scheme to be adding multiple computer labs or, or iPad purchases or things like that.
So, when it says, when it says LCD projector replacement, replacement most of the district, fourteen thousand dollars, that's, that's part of a plan that was in place, that it's now time to do that.
The LCDs in this building are ten years old.
Are they working?
A num- a number of them are not and they need to be replaced, alright? The technology changes, alright? And, uh, you know, it's a useless piece of equipment that doesn't work.
I know, but if you add up those, the, the projector-
It's also in your exclusionary cost, not in your operating budget piece, remember that.
Are the Acer Chromebooks in the exclusionary too?
The technology pieces is-
Smart for it, that's all.
I, I, forgive me, I bet a one ear plug, so I really can't, you know, hear that, hear everything that's going on, so, you know, based, based on what's been, you know, submitted, yes, some of that, some of that is replacement, some of it is making some purchases to go for, but not a, there's no big grand design purchase in this, in this budget.
And as far as the mower?
Gonna try to buy the mower out of this year's budget.
Okay.
Gonna try.
Do we have a mower here and a mower at the high school or one mower that goes in between?
We have one mower and a trailer and a, and a pickup truck, okay?
I, I noticed the mower mentioned on Twitter, so.
Some goats.
Trying, trying to buy the mower out of this year's budget. I'm trying to buy the mower out of this year's budget. Why? Because the deck is falling apart and it's gonna cost three thousand dollars to weld the deck back on to make it safe. Why would you put three thousand dollars into an whole piece of equipment, you know? So-
Can I ask the, just clarifying question?
Yes.
Um, the, at the high school, is the, um, the point two Spanish and French still being, being reduced? I don't see-
That was new.
That was new.
Remember, we started out with a new position.
Okay.
So, uh, we're still-
Oh, it's right here, I'm sorry.
We're still adding, we're still adding, uh, uh, a Spanish position.
Okay, at point eight?
Yeah, at point eight.
And then, um, what about the AP enrichment program, is that still gone?
Yes, that five thousand dollars. And then, and, and to be honest, in the valley, it's kinda lost its luster, so.
Okay. Alright. Any other?
So, are we going to make any movement on athletics or?
I think we have a discussion right now, so if you wanna make movement, you're gonna make a, make a, make a pitch.
Do you want the answer to the, uh, uniforms?
Sure.
It's, the total in this budget is twenty-nine thousand, five fifty with, you know, and that is-
What is it?
Coaches polo, polo shirts, that's, um, it, it, this is actually very generic.
I bought it myself.
It's like, it's listed as uniforms twenty times a hundred and five, uniforms twenty times a hundred and, it doesn't designate a sport, um, in our line items, so.
Well, I told him, we replace the ones that critically need to be replaced. So, he's doing an inventory based on need, alright? Based on need.
And, and then there, I did have other questions about the sports, um, like the field lining machine.
Essential piece of-
Do we have one?
Essential piece of equipment, we need it, we, we need to get it updated, yeah.
Is that something we just purchased when football came in or have we had one in the past?
No, you line the field for soccer, for field hockey.
And then shoulder pads, I'm considering we just-
Shoulder pads are a safety item, they, every year they have, every year they have to be, be sent out.
I, I was under the impression we were sending them.
Send them out. If they, if they test them and they fail, you have to replace it.
Yeah.
Helmets and shoulder pads have to be tested and if the company says they fail, you, you, they have to destroy it. You, you, you're not allowed to take it back.
Any other, any other question with that?
That's an ongoing, any contact sport, that's an ongoing, you know, issue with, with safety equipment. And it doesn't matter, sometimes you buy them and particularly a helmet, you know, you get one season out of it because, you know, the, the, yeah, whatever reason, you know, they, they, they put them under a, some kind of a pressure test and-
Yeah, they should, they should do those tests.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't pass, regardless of how old it is, they're done.
But also, you, you can't, you, you can't buy on the cheap when you first buy a helmet. You have to buy a quality helmet if you want it to last X amount of years. Um, and I, I, again, I don't know what the trend in, in the purchase has been and so forth, but I, I think everything that you're bringing up is a good thing to talk about moving forward. So, I think we have to have a five-year plan for everything. And, and, and people need to come here and present, this is what our plan is for technology, for sports, for band, for, you know, so we can really hear, uh, concretely about, you know, last time we did this.
so we can really hear concretely about, you know, the last time we did this was, you know, this this mower, I know for a fact from what Dr. Davis is saying, it's bubble gum being held, and twelve grand is nothing. Would get, we'll get another twenty, well, that's one-time money. Twelve grand will get fifteen years out of that, twenty years out of that, you know?
But yes, if I can, if I can squiggle the money out of this year's budget, it definitely would come back and say to you, you freed up that money.
And and I might even make a motion to make it the Dr. Perry Davis mower.
Oh, thank you.
Put a plaque on it?
Snowplow is probably what I'm gonna get.
Yeah, that's fine. Did you get that in, uh, in Dover, Sherman or Raisin?
Snowplow has their name on it.
Um, is there, is there other, I mean, uh, cause I I do wanna have, I don't, I know it's eight o'clock, but I'd like to have an open discussion about.
No, we need it. We definitely need it. I I, I'm I'm just concerned, and I don't know if maybe you can speak to this, but, I mean, uh, we're losing a a counselor at the high school and then a part-time counselor at the, uh.
Middle school.
Middle, no.
Oh, elementary.
Oh, elementary.
It's one for middle school and high school and one at JFK.
Let me clarify. The counseling position, it's listed as the high school, but the person actually splits his time between high school and middle.
So what is that gonna leave in terms of of, you know, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
It'll be two, two guidance counselors.
We'll have two full-time guidance counselors at the high school along with an adjustment counselor.
So, and what about the middle school?
Uh, Paul, help me out. There's two counselors and and an adjustment counselor, so there'll be three.
So this, where it says high school, uh, one FTE counselor is actually high school, middle school?
He does spend, he does spend, uh, a couple days at the, um, middle school.
So we'd still have one full one in the high school and one full one in the middle school.
A full year, along with two guidance counselors.
Are you sure? There's, there's, there's two guidance counselors here.
Can you come up so I can?
Period. There's no adjustment counselor in the middle school.
Oh.
But come up, come up and talk.
I I just wanna.
Yeah, we just need, we just need clarity, so.
I just wanna know, servicing kids, testing, like, I, this, you have guidance counselors, you have school psychologists, so I'm just.
And so. No, I, it's a great question. I apologize. We've, we've been looking at the service delivery model with the school psychs for some time, and what we're really trying to do, I I've worked with a team of psychologists all year. We've come up with five different proposals. We've gone through it every time. We're at a place where, uh, the middle school really needs the psych on the campus, here, on site.
Is there not one full-time here?
They, they've been part-time here and then part-time at, uh, four, five. So they've kinda mirrored the team chair. So if the team chair went four to seven, they followed them four to seven as a psych. And they had a, they mirrored them. And what we're doing is, we're gonna put one psych here, given the needs of the students and what's going on. So that, you know, the middle school has a psychologist. So it will be, just as Dr. Davis said, it'll be two counselors and a psych here on the plant.
So what does it look like at the elementary level then, on both Millville and?
At the elementary level, um, there will be at JFK, um, a psych, and then the high school is gonna split. I have to work out the remaining details of the high school split.
So there's one psychologist for about six hundred kids at the elementary in Blackstone?
But but also, you're losing the half, but you're getting the full person in that building.
Is the psych, are they interns or they, are they?
No, there are employees.
Okay.
There are employees. So, um, I I know what you're thinking. You're thinking of the practical program with MSP, and yes, we still have that relationship.
Yeah.
That is not, um, you know, that's not what we're talking about. That's completely separate.
Okay, fine. So, so in the high school?
Yeah.
There's two guidance counselors, or for next year in this proposal, there's two guidance counselors, there's a psychologist, and there's an adjustment counselor? Full-time, four people, full-time.
And.
In the high school.
The psych is gonna split their time between, uh, the high school and MES, yes.
So half-time, okay, so there's three and a half.
Three and a half.
So in the middle school, so in the middle school, there's two guidance counselors, one psychologist, and one.
Part-time?
Part-time.
Oh, that's it.
Oh, that's it, just those three.
So there'd be two.
Yeah, what he, what Dr. Davis had explained in the beginning.
So there's.
For the middle school.
Just three total. So there's no adjustment, and no adjustment counselor in the middle school?
Ah.
Again, gotta understand the balance. The guidance counselors at the high school, a significant part of their job is college and career.
College program.
Correct.
Here.
Right.
Most of their work is around, around adjustment.
Right.
Correct.
So, okay.
They're not worried about getting kids into college.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
It's a little bit of a difference.
You have to factor that in. The role, we say guidance counselor, but the role is different.
Right. But they, but they're training.
Yes.
They're training. The guidance counselors, I I'm concerned about the middle school, cause I think things are increasing. Need is increasing.
Need is in.
So those guidance counselors who are in the middle school, who are doing more adjustment counseling, is their background educational guidance counseling, they, in other words, they have masters in education, or is their background counseling? Cause there, is a difference. A difference.
I would say that they, uh, they are clearly both capable of doing triaging of anything that that's presented to them. Um, and as well as doing the scheduling and, hey, how's, how's your academic success going? Uh, but they could also do the mental health piece. I I I I, I'm pretty confident in that.
I agree.
So there's two.
Cause they've been doing it for a very long time.
If I, if I may, um, I mean, I've, I've been with them. We've gone to, uh, out of emergency meetings and transitioning students back from, you know, difficult matters, uh, as it relates to a young person's health. They, they are very, very skilled and each has done a really great job at that. So that that is part of their tool belt and their skill set.
So you have, there's two and a half here. Of a counselor or a psychologist?
Next year in the proposal, I'm sorry.
Three.
Next year's, in next year, you have your two counselors and you'll have a psych.
Psychologist.
All right, so three, okay.
Now, the the key piece there, I wanna add, the training for the psychologist is the same as the counselor, and I really appreciated one day in a conversation with Dr. Davis. He kinda helped change, just tilt my thinking a little, but the training's the same for the counselors as it is for the psychs. They they're trained in the same methodologies, the same theory, the same practice. The difference is the psych has to test and is trained in assessment. And the counselors are not. That's the only difference. So, you know, we're going where the needs are and where we see the pockets of need. And and that's why there's a little bit of a change in in the configuration of service delivery. We're going where the students' needs are. And and this is all based on what we know. As we talked about in, you know, you weren't here in February, but the last time we sat together in February, we said, these are the knowns.
Right.
And we work on knowns. So what we know, this is how we're organizing ourselves for next fall.
So then in JFK, there'll be what? One psychologist?
The complex is how many?
Uh, the complex has, it would be one psych. There's a reduction of a half that is being taken offline, as Dr. Davis had already mentioned. And we're gonna put a psych on that plant permanently.
One.
Just one?
No adjustment counselor there.
But you already have, uh, Mrs. Sherman there. So she's already there.
So there'd be two there.
We increased it to a half last year.
Right.
Cause we said, hey, you know, there's a lot of kids here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you have two at the complex and then how many at Millville?
Millville will have, uh, one counselor.
Right.
And then the psych splitting. And again, I have to look at the exact testing, really the testing and see what's needed for there.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
I'm holding my hand right now. This is, um, basically a roster, June twenty, June twenty-fifth, twenty thirteen. What is it? It's building by building, basically roster. Who's teaching what with class sizes. Is this something we can produce for our next?
I don't know yet.
Something similar.
It's what we had last year in terms of.
Something similar, because we're kinda chasing our tails here. I mean, I think if we all have a common document.
It's a good visual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, and I.
By by building.
Right, and I think the.
It's got names attached to it. It's got some open positions, but I think we can understand better what we're talking about here.
Well, and I think the per, last year.
Our shadow here.
I agree, and I I think last year, I think we, this conversation, we we've had it quite a few times last year on what the needs of the students were. Um, and and the concern at where it's, where it's headed and trying to get it, you know, to the right places. So that's, that's where my concern comes in when I'm seeing the cuts is, are we following through with, you know, what our overall goal was with the counseling? What we talked about last year, or are we going in reverse? So that, I mean, that's just following through with the goals or our expectations and what happened in the conversations last year.
So I think that's something we could kinda reproduce and and just, you know, just update with names and, you know, positions.
Well, let me get the posting out.
Yeah.
To know where the people are going to be. Cause right now I've got fifty-eight people that I don't have position, that that technically don't have jobs.
I understand, I understand.
Let me, let me, let me get that out of the way, but I can, by June twenty-sixth, I'll be able to give you a report. Where we, where we see the, uh.
Thank you.
The staff.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hi, any other, any other, uh, items that you would like to bring up now?
Um, well, I guess I had some other questions.
Okay.
Um, which I know I shared a list with everyone that I was just looking for more information on. Um, and I, I guess, I mean, we need to know as a committee where we stand on some of these things. I'll start at the beginning, the clubs that I listed.
Go ahead.
Um, so according to the budget at hand, it looks like we have incorporated every club back into the building's budgets, which are currently funded by our PTOs.
Some PTO, some, not all.
Um.
Correct.
So is that something we are going to to fund this year or?
There's no budget to fund them.
Right.
But some.
As a committee, are we, that is something I think the PTOs have always worked towards, so. I I'm assuming these are recommendations from the administrators, is they put them in their budgets.
Yes.
Um.
Right.
But it isn't something that we have funded in the past, and, I mean, it is twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, no, I understand the history. Many of these were funded and over the years were were parsed out to PTO funding. I mean, when I got here, the middle school had no funding for honor society and student council. Two critical student activities, and we paid for them this year out of the budget, okay? You you.
And the rest of them were funded by the PTO.
If, if the PTO could raise the money, you know, it's not like they're sitting on a hundred thousand dollars and they grant it to us. I mean, they they have to do serious fundraising to create, to create enough money to make these things happen.
Well, there's a lot of houses that have been flocked, just saying.
And, you know, but I mean, um, I I think in talking to Mr. Cameron, there's a little bit of fundraising fatigue in this building.
I think everywhere.
Yeah.
I think everywhere.
Yes.
I think all of those groups are seeing less.
So counting on a group to raise money to do an activity, I I have grave concerns about that.
So what, so what, um, play it out for us then, Dr. Davis. Play it out for us a little bit. So it gets funded, like, in the budget. And PTOs raise half of it. That other half would be in excess at the end of the next year and would flow into E and D or wherever.
Right.
Or would.
Or the PTOs could put their efforts, particularly at the middle school, you know, with with Nature's Classroom, the DC trip. You know, trying to raise money for scholarships for people that can't afford to participate in these activities.
Good point.
There was a very significant, uh, fundraising this year, you know, so that more of our students could go to those trips. And, uh, uh, that's where I'm saying fundraising fatigue is kinda setting in.
Okay.
I I, again, I I believe, and I will just state for you again, that when you look at what's important to running a school, certainly academics, but you also have to look at the arts, you certainly have to look at activities, and you certainly have to look at athletics. All of those things come together. Many of you are at the graduation, all three speakers, all three student speakers, their academic success was what? It was, it was a combination of what they did in the classroom, but they all spoke about being in music, being in the arts, being in activities, or being in athletics. That's what helps them to grow and develop. And, you know, when you start pulling out and you can't run it because you don't have the money to to pay for an advisor, you know, it it has, it has an impact on 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 the school. So I I just bring that back to your attention, you know, in terms of what's the value add. I think many of these activities, many of the things that we talk about in the arts, you know, we get a tremendous value back, you know, for a rather, for a ra- rather small investment, quite frankly, in stipends.
But we're still looking at reductions this year, which to me, I mean, if we had people working on this end for us, I I fear that if it's there this year and then next year, we have to cut something, this is where we're going to look. And then you're taking something away again. Um, and then my next question would be looking at the way I I typed it out here is, where is the parity then? Because elementary clubs, you have one at Millville, you have four at AFM and three at JFK. So, and these are, we we're, we're saying we wanna, you know, keep these structured in, in, you know, curriculum. Why? Why isn't there newspaper or theater or running club at the other elementary building? If we're gonna do it for one, how do we not do it for another one?
It's called cohort size.
Yeah, is some of it driven by people willing to run?
No, the the, they have these clubs there. They're being paid for by Mespa. So, you know, or or other versions of clubs that clearly aren't in our budget. So i- if we're funding it for one, how do we not fund it for another?
Is there not funding fatigue at Millville Elementary School? I'm ki- you know, I'm kidding. We have to kinda be light here a little bit, too, and this is a tough discussion.
I I'm.
I hear your equity, you know, um.
I mean, these clubs were clearly funded by all of the PTOs this year.
All of them? So.
Yes, even AOK was funded by.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars was raised by our PTOs this year?
Well, it's twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. It's actually probably more because they they have a cupcake club, they have a art club, they have scrapbook club, they, and the PTOs are paying.
But it doesn't include honor society.
In Millville, they have cupcake club?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do. Crafts, games.
There are.
I thought kids paid for those too.
No, there is no fee to the student.
I'm just.
Nope.
Raising the question, you know.
Okay.
I mean, that, it's just another very large, it's twenty-five thousand dollars when you look at the two, um, well, I separated by elementary and by middle school, so. It's eleven thousand, five hundred, two dollars for elementary.
It's what?
Eleven thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
No. It's, um, six thousand in Millville, um, five thousand, five hundred and eighty-three in in.
No, Millville, you can't count the five oh four and the, um, the, the substitute principals under that same budget line. So I had to, I pulled those out of both. These are strictly the clubs that are paid to s- to teachers as stipends for, um, after school.
It's eleven.
Other comments?
All, uh, the reason I'm looking at these, again, I'll say it, is because we're, we're taking teachers out of classrooms and we're still, you know, these things are already running. I know people are tired, but they're already, they are in place. They're not, they're not gonna do fundraising to pay teacher salaries. So. You know, maybe we could meet them halfway and and try to include half of them this year, so.
We're losing one teacher at Millville Elementary next year. First grade.
Right.
One teacher at Millville Elementary. You've got everything else back. And we're adding a special ed teacher, but we're, we are going from two Ks to one, one first in that school.
But to district-wide, I know you just said a while ago, we're only looking at two layoffs now, is that?
Well, in teachers, I, you know, councils are different, but, you know, in terms of classroom, in terms of, you know, the way, the way it's gonna, but when I say layoffs, because we have some people that have taken jobs in other districts, somebody's gonna move, but yes, the net would be we'd lose a position.
Professional staff.
But, yes, but in term, I don't think of it as a layoff when 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 I'm not really laying somebody off. I may move somebody from middle school to an elementary school.
I mean, when I began compiling my list, we were looking at, I believe, twelve total staff, um, professional and otherwise.
Yeah, but again, many of those positions on my list were positions that were new. And so they, they're not here this year. So, you know, the librarian at the high school, the point four phys ed, and the the additional point, point two and and Spanish, I mean, those were not positions that were currently in this year's budget, so. Yes, those are positions that we wanted, but they're not positions that are currently there. Okay?
I have a question. We're, we're losing one, right? One or two positions?
We're losing one position at JFK.
Yep.
Third, third grade.
Okay, I got you.
We're losing one position at Millville Elementary.
Okay.
Teaching position. We're losing two kindergarten aides at Millville Elementary.
Right.
All right. We're losing four sped aides and we're reducing the aides at JFK for kindergarten from six and a half hours a day to three hours a day. It's the net loss of two point five FTE, but there still will be five.
So when they go to part, when they go to, when they do go to part-time, do we offer, we don't offer them health insurance, correct?
If they work less than twenty hours, they do not get health insurance, that's correct.
So do we have a cost on what the difference is full-time versus part-time for the K aides? For what the difference is for the part-time, going from part-time to full, I mean, full-time to part-time?
It's all going to depend because it goes into their seniority list. So I can't give you that until I post the positions and we start killing them based on the seniority list. I have a meeting tomorrow with the co-presidents to kind of go over that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if some of those people take health insurance or they don't, it's going to depend on the seniority list. How far up, up that goes.
Others? I have one that's probably not going to be popular. I'm gonna say it anyway so we can get feedback and then go from there. I have a question on the high school department heads. So it's sixteen thousand dollars. It's small money, I'm not even doing it for the money. But my understanding is, is that they teach one less class. So if we take the department head stipends away, they each get an additional class. We gain, how many classes, five?
Five sections.
Five sections. Okay. And do, uh, uh, oh, more. And department heads evaluate or don't evaluate?
Do not.
Can't do peer on peer.
Do not.
They can?
They, they can if they're trained. We haven't had the training at high schools.
But the, the present ones do not evaluate in the current.
The new evaluation tool they've gotten trained.
Is the plan that they will?
Not, not at this point, no.
No.
Do they, do they coordinate course offer? What do they do? As a department head, what do they do?
They work with the other members in their department to coordinate curriculum and work on that. But again, at the high school, many of the departments are five or fewer, five or four. So you've got a department head, you know, with three or four other colleagues.
So then the impact would be.
And they work on the budget.
Some less coordination, less budget, but the gain would be.
They teach in the section.
Five additional classes.
Five additional classes.
And I know one of the things we're strongly working towards is a
Rager.
Curriculum director, assistant superintendent, so I hope that some of those duties would fall on, on there.
So five section, five classes is essentially one FTE? Is it five or six?
Yeah.
High school teaching load is five classes.
So it's something to think about, that's all.
Well.
I also don't want to minimize what they do. I mean, there's, there's a lot of support that they do for their colleagues relative to budget and equipment and materials. So it's, it's not just having a period off. I mean, they, they really do support their people, right? They really do.
This is a knee ask here too.
Right. Which is.
No, I, I totally understand, I totally understand that.
Okay.
But I, my frame of mind is department heads evaluate, and I know they haven't yet, and maybe there's a plan they will. You know, it's more of a C T L is really what we're talking about, you know, a team leader within the department is really what they're doing now. My, my only thought around this is like, sixteen thousand dollars is, is, is nickels and dimes as far as I'm concerned. My concern was to have a dialogue about the five sections. If we could increase five sections, that's something, you know. And I'm not sold on either way, don't, okay, I'm just bringing up.
I just wanted to clarify just what they do there.
Yeah.
Budgeting, um, they do, they don't do the values, that's the one thing that's been taken away from it, the budgeting. They're gonna be doing the knee ask, MCAS, if you're an MCAS subject, which we have three of them, they coordinate all that, they have to make sure everybody's doing what is on the MCAS test. So there is a lot to go into. I think Mr. Dudek would even be able to express it fairer than I can, I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
But freeing up those five five sections, would that help us in any way with any of the reductions we're looking at at the high school?
No, it would just make the te- the, the teacher would do, do.
The, the only.
It would help class size, it would help.
Might be some additional course offerings?
Course offerings, you know, um, you know, we had a, and again, we had an English teacher at our school that started to offer screenplay writing, who's filled in a second with, with juniors and seniors. And, and, and they, I think they do a good job at, at BMR, I'm not, you know, being critical in that aspect because the, the robotics that came in, the drama that they put on this year was, was outstanding. I'm just thinking if, if there's five more sections, how, what, and again, I'm only, I'm only in my infancy of thinking this through. And I want to throw it out there so people know that I'm thinking about it and others can start thinking about it as well and get feedback from the high school and, and Mr. Dudek and Keith.
Excellent, I like that idea though.
My concern, my concern is the lack of curriculum focus that we've had. And if those people are playing that role, it'd be difficult to lose that right now.
But again, we're looking for a curriculum saturated assistant superintendent that can, and again.
But what I'm saying is, no, I'm saying current condition, we haven't had that role and we don't have that person hired yet. So that's my concern is unless, until we fill that gap, it's probably a little preliminary to be.
Well, there's nothing going on over the summer. I don't think there's a lot of department head work going on over the summer. My hope is that we're gonna have a curriculum assistant superintendent in here by August first, I hope, or mid-August, you know. So I think there is some, I think there's, I think it's worth talking about, that's all. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not negating anything that anybody's doing, but I, I do think it's worth talking about. Like, what, what Dr. Davis said, it is, it isn't like there's a department of ten people either, you know. Um, there's, you know, part of the department head and three other people, you know, it's not, it's not, you know.
This conversation needs to be had before July first.
Well, yeah.
These conversations or these.
I know, we need to finish this by next meeting.
These changes need to, need to occur if they're going to occur or not going to occur by a certain time, so. And I guess I was under the assumption that we need, needed to make some of these decisions tonight, so that
For the postings, yeah.
Postings could be done, I mean, I, I just, I feel like we keep saying, well, let's think about this, or let's think about this, or let's think about this, and we just keep not making decisions.
Well, I mean, I haven't heard one thing, I haven't heard one thing thrown out yet.
Well, I'm gonna give you some facts right now, just from notes I've been taking here.
But I, I want to move to throw something out, so if we need to take a vote and change it, then let's change it.
Just the things that we've spoken of. If, if, scenario wise, if we take thirty thousand out of athletics, which the uniform total is, and other
Is that?
polo shirts and such, is about twenty-nine thousand. So if we take thirty thousand, and I'm including the ten, so it probably is only twenty.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll just change that. So if we take twenty out of athletics.
How much would be left then in that, for cutting?
Well, it's added.
The, the thing you have to remember about athletics is the budget is at a sixty-eight thousand dollar increase over last year, so minus ten was fifty-eight thousand. So that would bring us to thirty-eight thousand.
It wasn't an increase, it's, it's, it's not genuine.
There are thirty thousand dollars worth of uniforms and, and such in here. But I mean, I, I personally want, want to go to them and say, you're not buying uniforms. I would, I think here, we're just saying, we're reducing it by thirty thousand. You do what you need to do, isn't, I mean, we're not going to
Micromanage.
micromanage it and say, you're not buying the twenty by a hundred and fives or the, I, that's not our place.
But wait a minute, by cutting them thirty thousand dollars, you're, you're macro managing it and telling them live with, with less.
We're taking thirty thousand out of their sixty, sixty-eight thousand dollar increase. This is just, this is ju- I'm just gonna give you what we've talked about. If we look at the clubs, subtracting out student council and keeping that on our plate for the middle school, but taking out drama, history, literacy, math, STEM, theater and yearbook out of the middle school, all of the elementary clubs which were funded by the PTOs this year, that is twenty-three thousand six fifty-three. So that total is forty-three thousand six fifty-three. Sixteen thousand for department, department heads would be fifty-nine thousand. And another item that I was going to mention was reducing the assistant line by ten thousand to one hundred and ten thousand, which would bring us to sixty-nine thousand dollars, which saves something on this as a, as a person in the classroom.
What does it save? I, I, I need to make a decision.
That could be Dr. Davis's determination.
Oh, no.
This is, this is money.
Let me be clear with this committee. You cut it, you own it, I will implement it.
I'm not willing to cut anything until I know what we're saving from it. That's, why would we do that?
This is just the numbers for what we've talked about in the last hour. This is the number for the athletics, this is the number.
We talked about, Aaron, who's agreed to cut it? I haven't agreed to cut any of that.
I think she's, she's, she's making a proposal right now.
What's the proposal?
Let her make it and, and we'll vote on it.
No, I'm giving you some facts based on the scenarios we've just spoken of. Because Jane had just mentioned, we keep saying, well, we'll, we're gonna think about it, we're gonna work on it. If he wants to go back and, and post positions tomorrow, I, I mean, I do think the decisions need to be made tonight if there's anything at all that we can restore off of this list.
Well, I think we can, if, if we ever come up with something we want to restore, it doesn't have to happen tomorrow morning. You know, he, he, Dr. Davis can go and, and, and from what we know right now, he can go and, and, and post those positions tomorrow. What you're, what you're proposing is maybe there might be more.
Beyond that, I agree.
You know, do we need to do that tonight?
I wasn't looking at more, I was looking at an apple for an apple. I wasn't looking at, um, it was definitely trade-offs when I proposed, when I sent my email to everybody this past weekend.
I'm still confused on what we're trading off. You, you're saying we're gonna free up this money for something, but I'm not sure what it is, so I can't say. Hold on, I'm not done. I can't say I want to cut a budget by thirty thousand dollars, not understanding what we're trying to restore with that. And I also don't know what, what, how, what impact a thirty thousand dollar cut has to that budget. And without having the department head describe to us what the impact would be, I'd have trouble voting on that and voting to just cut that without, because you said you took, you're giving us some facts. Those are the facts I need to know before I can vote to cut a thirty thousand dollar budget. I need to know what the impact would be to that department. We can sit here and run numbers and say these are facts, but the facts are, how does that impact the kids, that department, and their being able to function? I'm not prepared to take a vote just because you threw out some numbers and said, we could cut this, we'd cut that, and it'll save seventy thousand dollars.
We don't even have what the impact's going to be on the two full-time cuts out of the middle school and what exactly class sizes are going to be and what they're going to, but they're already on the list.
We're gonna lose one middle school math teacher and one special ed teacher. Special ed is driven by the numbers and we can implement the I E Ps with that reduction. The, the math, you know, will, will result in slightly increased class size.
And what I'd ask Dr. Hahe, Dr. Hahe, Dr. Davis for is just a, you know, a roster basically of what we currently have so we can make some, I think now we're kind of talking in the air. I think we need to have names on slots, we need to have things in front of us. So I think if we can have that for maybe our next meeting, the twenty-sixth, then we can all be dealing from the same deck.
Just know I'm a short timer on the twenty-sixth.
I understand that.
Okay? You've got me till midnight on the thirtieth.
You know, I think when we talk about developing new budgets, we need to think about from a grounds-up approach. And, and this year was a correction. It was to take us from bad past practices to solid ground here. And then I think the future with the new superintendent coming in has to be that, what they call in business, activity-based accounting, where you start with a framework of nothing and then you build it up. And then when we get to these types of discussions there, and then we know, what does that thirty thousand mean? Because we've seen it get built from the bottom, we understand the impact. Right now, we don't understand that impact if we just cut something, we, we don't know what it means. And, and I hope that's the direction we're gonna continue to go, is that we've got solid footing to start that. And I also think the discussions we've had with the towns, that has to be part of it, is that we're putting in the, the ground level work first before we build up to here's what the number is.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but I, I do have a concern over, you know, when we met over budget last year and we had a conversation centered around, you know, guidance counselors and psychologists and where we needed to go with that in order to improve, what it's gonna look like in the middle school, what it's gonna look like in the high school. I feel based on that conversation that we're going backwards now. So although going from the ground up, I, I totally agree with, I feel as though as a committee, when we had that conversation, that conversation is we are building this, this, this environment for these children. And I think creating that environment and keeping it moving forward and not taking it away is a concern. My concern is, is still with the counselors. You know, you, you do have unknowns coming into kindergarten and, you know, some unknowns, and, and what happens if, if you have people that are testing, you know, and, and these children need services immediately? You know, I, I mean, I don't know if you can speak to that, but I mean, what happens when that happens? You know, you, there's constantly people being brought up, being tested and, and needing the services, and do we have that available in, in our schools? And, and last year we didn't, and we put it in. And that was our conversation that we had last year at this time. So now I feel as though we're, we're taking it away, and that's my concern.
Okay, can I point out something? You went through this exercise last year and you spent the cookie jar to fund it, that cookie jar isn't there.
Correct. Well, that's.
So budgeting is not just for one year, it's a long-term plan.
Right.
You made a short-term plan last year in, in terms of funding additional positions, but we did not have the six hundred and fifty-five thousand in E and D to continue that. And we've had the flak of the town saying, your assessments were up eighteen and twenty-two percent. I mean, that's the balance that you have to have here. You've got to have revenue and expenses. Much the same if you cut back on athletics, not buying uniforms for one year, but guess what? It, it's just kicking it down the road. It's just kicking it down the road. So it's a matter of, of, of responsible balance, you know, in terms of where, where you need to go. Any budget can be reduced. Any budget can be reduced, that's the easy part. But it's thinking it out, and you've all said you need a plan, and I fully agree with you. All right, but when I came here as interim, all right, it was with the understanding as an interim to kind of pick up and go, all right? I couldn't pick up and go, I had to dig in the crap. Can we be candid? And I've spent the entire year digging in it. So we need to, we need to have an understand, you're gonna be in a much better financial place at the end of this fiscal year. All right? You're gonna end up with money in E and D, all right, at the end of this year, that's a good thing. Why? Because you've got to get back to a, a balance of being able to offset your assessments to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars out of E and D. All right? And, and deal with that. I, I just have to point this out because you start moving money around to get a counselor back, well, next year when you want that counselor to stay, you can't go back and move that money again because you can't go into athletics another twenty thousand dollars. You can do it once, but if your long-term plan is to fund a counseling position.
Without more revenue. And, and again, the plan, I think I've said this over and over again, the fiscal infrastructure is set. Now we have to kind of let it grow a little bit. Next year, at this time, we'll be in a different position, okay? It's not gonna be perfect position, we might be talking about some cuts then too, okay? But we're clearly gonna be in a better fiscal position.
Well, I think it's important to recognize that Dr. Hahe described budgeting to what's known right now, is that correct? That was, those were your words. And I think the concern I have is, is right, Wendy, that there could be unknowns, but we can't budget for an unknown. We have to react to that unknown, and that has been a challenge in the past. But I, I don't think we can budget to that.
But we have contingencies. You know, when we got to the fiscal fourteen budget, you know, Dr. Hahe, we've been working on our circuit breaker money this year. Remember in the budget, we took an offset of three hundred thousand? It looks like we're gonna get three sixty-five in circuit breaker by the end of June or the beginning of July. That gives us that little cushion to deal with that issue that you raised, Wendy, about what do you do if? You get a move in and you got to deal with it. That's, that's where you're gonna find that cushion, all right? And that number, we went through a fiscal, we went through a, a special ed audit, you know, in November poll, I think. You know, so that, that number, you know, by the time we got official word, you know, seemed like, let's apply three hundred in the budget process, and if the other sixty-five comes in, which, which we now know is gonna come in in the payment, that gives us that little bit of cushion to address an unknown, all right? To address an unknown. But circuit breaker again is not a funding, it's a revenue, but it's an offset against what you're paying out in, 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 in special education claims. It's not a revenue that just automatically every year is gonna go up, all right, so.
And, and the other thing about last year, we didn't go and, and, and pillage these type of line items that we're talking about today. We went and found electricity that was really overfunded. Those are those big ticket items that we found money in and really, then let's put that back in. You know, I think, I think these are the things that, Aaron, you, you provided us with, and it's all good, it's all good numbers.
But that was, I think hers was based on the twelve originally.
Yeah.
That conversation was based on what we, you know, that, that was still in our heads.
Sure, sure. And, and quite honestly, we all should be doing this.
But it's all stuff that's still questionable in my, I mean, we recertified a budget thirty thousand dollars less than what we operated on this year. And we're giving athletics sixty-eight thou, fifty-eight thousand dollars more. So, to me, that, I mean, we're operating on a full budget less than what we operated on last year. I don't see where we can justify that increase. I mean, and-
Again, I don't view that as an increase.
Brian's defense saying we need someone, a department head in here, but I don't wanna micromanage, I mean, but there's a, it says athletic supplies, one times one thousand, and it's listed as a one thousand dollar line item. We don't know what that is. And that, and I, they're gonna use it for what they need? I mean, there is definitely, there's definitely room for movement in these line items without telling him where he needs to take it from. But that we cannot, we had to drop our budget by thirty thousand, we need, I don't see how we can justify having a part of our budget increased by fifty-eight thousand dollars when we're operating the whole district at thirty thousand dollars less.
You know how I feel about that. I don't view that as an increase, I view it as it's finally gotten to where it should be.
But the uniforms are an increase, it's not like we weren't-
But we don't know that. We don't know if the uniforms were bought twenty years ago, ten years ago, or whatever.
So the plan next year needs to be to find out before now what's necessary.
No, the plan next year is, next year is January, we have everybody in here, and we talk about what is your five-year plan in terms of these purchases moving forward?
Starting September.
Yeah, you can start it, I mean, you can start it in September with twenty-nine thousand dollars of it, so.
I suggest we have one meeting a month, starting in September-
With a different department?
Just on the budget, just focused on the budget. We talked about maybe having a regular meeting and a workshop meeting, maybe we need to make a workshop meeting continuously on the budget, and we pull in the people from the town department heads that we need in here.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we did do that last year. This year, as a separate, we probably piloted it, no one showed up. I don't think we give up on that.
Right, we can't stop doing it, because nobody showed up.
I don't think we use one of these meetings because there's just too much. We also got away from having kids come in here and show us why we're here. So, and we also had some stuff to do, we had to hire a superintendent and go through those things. So, I think that the budget, and again, I'm gonna talk about this in the end, we need to go and rework the subcommittees, okay? And I'm gonna do that, and I'm thinking, really thinking about three subcommittees, really, and we focus on that. Not having fifteen or whatever they are, eight, you know, it has to be three, and we focus on and drive those. One will be regionalization that we've been talking about. But I think, I think your point is, we definitely need to start in September, having departments in here and saying, "All right, tell us, tell us what you're thinking." You know, start thinking about a five-year plan for uniforms. I mean, the athletic director, of course, Lob got here, and then he also was coaching football, you know? He's probably just hanging on by a thread. So, and again, I think a lot of departments feel that way. It was a needed transition in leadership. We made it through this year, a lot of good things happened this year. The end result is, we have fiscal clarity. Yeah, we really do. People are more energized in the district, people feeling more heard with authentic relationships. You know, we can't replace that. We have to continue to do that, you know? Okay. You wanna continue to talk about budget?
I do, yes, please. I guess I, I think I would like to have us make a decision that we either liken, accept what's been presented to us, and that becomes our school committee, you know, changes or cuts, or we make some. And I would like to bring that halftime counselor back in. And so I would like to propose that we take the JFK, AFM, Millville, and middle school clubs. Now, in the middle school, I'm just talking drama, history, literacy, math, STEM, and theater. So keeping the yearbook, keeping the National Honor Society as it is, and I think there was one other one.
Can you repeat that?
Drama, history, literacy, math, STEM, and theater. And-
Keeping that, I'm sorry?
No, taking those, those out.
One more time, sorry, I was on a line. Drama, history, literacy, STEM.
Drama, history, literacy, math, STEM, and theater. It was sixteen hundred fifty-seven dollars each, there's six of them, it's nine thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars, but split it in half, so fifty percent. So we would fund fifty percent, and either the PTO would fund the other half, or the students would pay a fee to join the club. Same thing, Millville, cut it in half, and the complex clubs, cut them in half. So there's still fifty percent funding going in that direction, but the PTOs, or whoever, or the students themselves, or the parents, if they want their kid to participate in drama or theater, would pay half. So, take the savings from that, take the savings from five thousand dollars additional out of the assistant superintendent, so it's now down to one-ten, and take this department head stipends, and I believe that would give us close to the twenty-three thousand dollars to put the counselor back in.
Can you, all right, can you just recap that?
Well, if I could find the pages, I could. The funding for the clubs, so cut it in half. Cut it in half. Five thousand dollars for the assistant superintendent and the department heads. Stipend. Stipend. And just to reiterate, those were funded this year. By PTO. So we would be helping support the PTOs who are struggling. Understanding that there's, it's a lot of work and it's tiring, so definitely doing that. That's my proposal. Second.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so you said-
Do I have to have the exact numbers because I can't find my pages anymore?
I think I have them.
Okay.
All right, you seconded it?
I did.
You seconded it, Wendy? Okay, so now we're gonna discuss it a little bit more. All right, I'm gonna open up discussion. I can start, but I don't really wanna start.
Go ahead.
I mean, I understand that the concept of that, but I think everything should be equal. Like, I'm just looking, this is some of Aaron's numbers. LCD projectors, thirty-five thousand. LCD projectors in District fourteen thousand, LCD projector here, four thousand. That's what, fifty-three thousand dollars in LCD projectors.
That's why I asked if they were working.
So we're, so we're like chiseling in nickel-and-dime in clubs, but we just spend fifty-three thousand on LCD projectors that haven't blinking.
Are these for the whiteboards?
Exactly why they're on my list.
So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it, but rather than chiseling those things, let's look at the bigger-ticket items and analyze those. I mean, we could attack uniforms, we could attack this, that, the other thing, but-
Which one do you want to look at?
So-
I just want somebody-
Hold on, there's a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
The second, and we're discussing now, so, and Steve's point is, are there other big-ticket that we can look at besides nickel-and-dime and those ones? I'm not comfortable reducing the assistant superintendent job position, really not.
Well, we haven't discovered, is that too much, too little, and we're going in blind on that one. So I think that's just an arbitrary unintelligent cut, you know? It may turn out, yeah, we can find an adequate person for ninety-five, we might spend a hundred and thirty-five, I don't know. But I think just plucking numbers off of that is kind of irresponsible.
What was the other one, I'm sorry, Aaron?
The department heads.
Which one?
The department heads.
Oh, department heads. Okay, if there's no more discussion, we're gonna focus.
I have some more discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
You just take a breath?
I'm gonna move it along.
I just am questioning why are we trying to add someone, add in a position that I have no feeling from Dr. Hahe that we need to add? I, maybe I misread it, but this is a counselor's position that I didn't get a sense that, I think that we looked at what the needs were, we've staffed appropriately for those needs, and I didn't get any indication from Dr. Hahe, who's the only department head here, unless Mr. Jub is a department head, sorry if I'm wrong, okay? So I'm not really sure why we're doing, why we're going through this, if-
If I may, real quick. First of all, I just wanna say that this isn't just any one person. I just, this has been a process that we've been going through as a leadership team for quite some time. And we've talked these things inside and out, and up and down. The leadership team is set on these positions, and has spoken, and has really done the analysis. It isn't like it's any one person. I'm here tonight, yes, I'm here because there were certain things I knew that may come up, I knew there was some questions from before, so if they came back, I wanted to be present. But we have talked this as a team operationally, and so I'm standing with my team in what they've put forward. And even when we were asked to look at something again, or a second, or a third, or a fourth time, or look at it a different way, or tilt the lens, and Dr. Davis is, he's really provided leadership in ways I don't think you could even imagine. He's not saying in a directive manner, "Do X." He's asking us to look at it, talk about it, work with our personnel, to come back with feedback, and we're doing that. I mean, we're driving our buildings, we're driving our programs and our services accordingly. I'm not comfortable making any changes in any recommendations outside of the team, and I'm not going to do that. So, as much as you may wanna ask me questions, unless it's going back to the leadership team for conversation, I'm not gonna endorse anything. And I don't feel that's fair to the team. And I know Dr. Davis hasn't said much, but I will, because, you know, there are other administrators that have really worked hard and spent weekends and nights, as some of you who are in education do, and in business, you do. You're asked by your boss to go do a task, and you do it. So, I'm not comfortable putting anything else forward, I'm not. Even the changes that-
Can you clarify again, though, right now, in the complex, there's two and a half, and next year, there'll be three?
No. No.
No, no, I apologize.
It's gonna be one. It's gonna be one.
What is it now, and what will it be?
You have one and a half now, you will have two next year. You'll have a psych full-time on the plant, and you will have a counselor on the plant.
He said it was point five.
But it was one point five this year.
Right now, yeah.
Right now.
And next year, it'll be two.
And next year, it will be two because the psych is being redeployed there permanently.
And in your opinion, is that adequate? May it may not be ideal, is that-
It's not ideal, but nothing is ever gonna be ideal.
I understand that.
But for the purposes of the exercise and the budget that we're facing, and the two towns that now have a lot on their plate as well to consider, and we're not done this budget process with the two towns, I wanna be sensitive to that fact. And I think, you know, there's a lot of information that you're considering, but we're not done with this process. I'm not even comfortable having a commissioner of education get a one-twelfth letter and the documents that have to go in on the thirtieth and be prepared for. We don't have a budget, so there's a lot of contingencies, a lot of things that can happen. And we've, as a leadership team, taken that into consideration. We really have.
So just, I'm confused again.
To the question you're asking directly, we're one point five this year, we're gonna have two next year.
Okay.
Okay.
And that is purposely being done because that's where the needs are. And again, talk to the principals and myself, and we've worked together through this exercise. And no, this is not the dream of dreams. I'm not gonna sit here and sing the praises and, you know, go up and down. None of us are happy about the budget we've gone through, none of us. I mean, even going before one town, and another town, and then going back, I wanna do this about as much as I want root canal. I can't imagine how you're feeling. So, I'm sensitive to everything, and with balance, I can tell you, this leadership team has done this exercise ad nauseam. And I appreciate, and I wanna, with all due respect, this man has done more than you could ever hope for this place.
I will withdraw my motion because I wrote down one.
But can I ask a question before you do that? Why does it say we're cutting point five if we're increasing by point five?
We're cutting the counselor, but Paul is redeploying the psychologist.
Correct.
So they will move from having had a counselor here to having a psychologist here full-time.
Right.
But I wrote one, so I didn't write two.
And that psychologist, as I mentioned earlier, mirrors a team chair right now. She will not be mirroring the team chair. The team chair can continue to move and do the team meetings and things, but that psychologist needs to be on that plant, needs to be-
So even though the team chair will be four through eight?
Or PK to three.
Whatever, the psychologist will stay here.
Will be in the building. Stay there.
Yeah.
Will stay in the building, correct.
I wasn't totally clear on that either, so don't think, you know, when I say two and three? I was off.
No, I was, I was too.
But that half FTE in the cut.
So based on the needs of our special education population, you're comfortable with what is presented?
We have stayed as far away from direct service cuts as possible at all times. And that's something that we as a team have done.
I understand that, but as the special ed director, my question is, are you comfortable, as the special ed director dealing with special education students, this is, you're comfortable with what we-
On what we know right now, yes. Including, earlier, there was a shift that Dr. Davis made. We looked at it, we talked about it, I went, met with the employee, they were comfortable. They said this is the right thing to do. So even to the points of communication, I sat with that person and said, "Look, things have changed, obviously, we have a move-in and a move-out, this is what we're doing."
And when things change, you adapt and you move forward.
When we know. And I go back to what Mr. Faulkner has mentioned very eloquently, we worked with knowns this year, nothing else. So I wasn't even comfortable doing this a month ago because the student was still here.
Yeah.
And that's that. So to your question, yes.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second, we're discussing.
No, she withdrew my motion.
So you withdrew.
Well, with that being said, that is why I, when I had started speaking of this, I was heading in the same direction as Jane, but I was leaving it in the hands of Dr. Davis on what he can restore out of this list. I think it's, we own the budget, it's been said here at this table, it's been said redundantly, I think it's our responsibility to decide whether we are spending money on these things, and let him decide where it needs to be spent if we're not.
But we've already done that, we've done that.
But we have, no, I, I-
Something was presented to us.
Don't think so.
Something was presented to us. We have every right to go through, like people have, okay, and say, "Hey, do we really, tell me more about this, or tell me about that." And we can make changes, we can make any change we want to this.
But that's what, I mean, I think those discussions still need to happen. And let him go to his leadership team and say, "I have fifty-three thousand dollars freed up because they moved A, B, and C, and what can we, what, on our list of priorities?" He stated that they have not wanted to make any of these.
But in the same breath, we have to say, "We freed up fifty-three, but we took fifty-three away from over here," so they have to deal with that.
A priority.
So it is that, you know what I mean? So-
Yes, on LCD projectors, and fifty-three thousand dollars is a prime example, that we don't, I mean-
Right, and if it's not working right now, I'd be putting it on there too. Because if you don't put it on there, it'll never get replaced. I mean, we have, I know I bring up the roof again, but the damn roof, we put off and put off and put off and put off.
Smart boards at JFK, we, two years ago, we put them in every single classroom. At seventy-two hundred dollars, so, I mean, I would still have questions about things like that.
And again, I think, I think moving forward into the next fiscal year, we need to have plans and be presented, like Brian was talking about. You know, each month, we have to maybe have a department come and say, "Present, tell us where you are right now, and tell us where you're thinking moving forward." What's this year, what's next year gonna look like, and what's the year after that gonna look like? You know? You know, I have to trust the leadership team in terms of, even though I have questions, I still have to go back and trust that they've done their due diligence, and this is the best-case scenario for kids.
Can I ask the committee, is there a consensus to try to restore this counselor? If so, I can go back to the leadership team and see whether or not we can look through the budget. A budget is a fluid document, and most of your money's in personnel. So as, unfortunately, as teachers say they're leaving us, either because it's a retirement, or they take your job, there's always a float.
I wasn't clear that there was a full-time psychologist coming into the building when it was being, but I don't know where anyone else stands with that.
I think we just heard from Dr. Hahe that he is somewhat comfortable with the present scenario, so I would-
To me, it's anything that's going to increase class sizes, which I think we're only left with, the middle school, you said math is going to affect-
One math teacher and one special ed, but the special ed is driven by an assessment of the IEPs.
The math teacher is going to affect the impact, the classroom size.
Well, and I would wanna know what that impact is.
Right.
You know what I mean, is it twenty-four, and that's the impact? That's not a big impact for middle school, as far as I'm concerned. You know, would I like to have everyone at twenty, sure? But, you know, again, I mean, I could, we could spend all night here going through, because I think every one of these positions is valuable and we should fight for it. I just don't think we can do it. I think we have to move forward and kind of say, "Now that we have this fiscal infrastructure, let's move forward and really think through." And knowing, like Dr. Davis said, we're gonna put three hundred thousand in for E and D every single year. As long as we don't go below that certain percentage. We were all committed to five hundred thousand last year, and we should stay committed to that. But we should put a little bit more cushion in there, you know what I mean? So, how do people wanna move forward? Because we still got a little agenda going. I think I'm comfortable with, you know, similar to what Dr. Hahe said, the leadership team has assembled this, it may not be ideal, but it's serviceable. I'd say we move forward as is.
And I will bring to your attention any changes at the June, January, June, twenty-sixth meeting- And I will bring to your attention any changes at the, at the Jan-, at the June, January, June, twenty-sixth meeting. You know, again, my highest priority with all of you right now is making sure you have a budget for July one. Are you getting prepared for town meeting on June thirty and getting the information into, into the commissioner? So that we are poised to have a budget and hopefully be successful at Millville Town Meeting and it's over. Right?
So I guess I'd, I'd put forward a motion to accept the current budget as it's presented.
Recognizing the input of the department heads and the, I'm sorry, the leadership team.
We don't need a motion.
We don't need it.
Beautiful.
Thank you for the-
Let these be the cuts, yeah.
Okay. All right. So is it fair, is it safe to say we can move forward on the agenda?
Okay.
All right. Consent Agenda A, warrants, minutes of meeting, May twenty-second, May twenty-eighth. Looking for a motion to accept.
Make a motion.
Motion made. Seconded. Any discussion? All of the favors are saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
It was silence. Any ayes? We're not doing hand votes yet. Report of the superintendent.
In your packet, we did receive a, you have in your provision in your contract that teachers give us advance notice to participate in that retirement, sick leave retirement bonus. So we have heard from a, a teacher at the middle school that she does plan to retire in August of twenty-fourth of two thousand and seventeen. The next item on the agenda, the marching band tentative schedule. Since this involves band camp and some trips, told by Mr. Bebo that the committee votes to accept the marching band schedule.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Georgette. Any discussion? All of the favors are saying aye.
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 The, the next item on the agenda, some of you are aware of the terms park and MCAS. The school district has to notify the commissioner of education about where we are going to go next year in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Are we going to stay a district that is going to implement the MCAS and implement it in a paper format? Or are we going to participate in some of the options to participate in the new park assessment? All right? And I included in the packet, the, your counsel for the Mass Association of School Committees. And your association has taken the position that this is not a decision that the superintendent can make. It is a policy decision and therefore requires board action. There's also a sheet comparing the park and the MCAS in terms of, in terms of items. And I will pass this out. The commissioner has just sent out an additional comparison of park and MCAS.
Have we, were, were we a trial district this year?
Trial for park at the high school. They picked a course called Integrated Math.
Written or online?
It was written. It was written for us.
So only one grade piloted?
One course, actually. Course. And the students in that class could have been in multiple grades. The students in grade ten, because they take MCAS, didn't participate in that. We had approximately forty students that participated in that trial.
Is there, is one of the options to try, do a trial per, within the grades again?
Yes. You, you, the, I've tried to outline, you can, the district has several options. You could select park for all grades. All right? And either in a digital or a paper-based format. You could select park for just selected grades. The only requirement is if you select a school, it has to be all park. Okay? So at the elementary level. The exception to that is, is at the high school because the tenth grader still have to do MCAS because that's a graduation requirement. So it would, they would, they would be doing park testing at grade eleven. All right? Or you could select the park, the results, you know, if you select the park, the results do not, are not held against you. They, they will be scored, but what, what that means is you won't be, you won't move from a, a level two status to a level three or two to one. All right? As that's being determined. Or you could remain MCAS and have the results used to determine student learning levels. We had a, a significant discussion at the leadership team meeting about our capability of, are we ready for park?
We have the infrastructure for park.
And I participated with Karen McGuire. We listened to, we, we listened to a phone conference call on the digital format. We are currently not using digital assessments. That is, as part of our own assessment work, we have not devised classroom computer-based assessments on, on, on any kind of a coordinated fashion. The person was very clear in saying, if you're going to go to park digitally, you want to make sure that the first time kids have seen a park question is well before we're sitting there doing park. So to gear up for park, you really have to start changing your assessment practices and start getting them into a digital format for that. Even though next year you could opt for park as a paper or a digital format in, in terms of that. We also looked at the fact, you know, how are we with our alignment, you know, to the common core standards, you know, formats, questions? Again, this has been a transition year without an assistant superintendent. You know, this is an area that we have not, you know, made any significant gains on. So holding our students accountable to a park assessment when we're still in the process of, of coordinating a curriculum. So the value add question is, what's the value add to our students to go to park versus staying with MCAS? And everybody on the leadership team, you know, clearly came back and said, you know, we should stay with MCAS. This is not the year, given the transition year, given the multiple issues that have been raised about digital format, park. Assessment format will be different than MCAS assessment format. And putting our students into that mix when we're not ready. And then looking at the results and saying, oh, look at these results. Well, you know, part of my reality check is, you always, you always want to make sure that you've aligned your curriculum, you've given the proper instruction and you're using an assessment format such that when the students take an assessment, they're prepared for it. Not teaching to the test, but they have had the opportunity to learn the content knowledge, they've had instructional practices that are aligned and they've had assessment practices that are aligned. So the, the, the leadership team would recommend that we stay with MCAS assessments for the two thousand fourteen school year. Given the legal counsel for, for MAS C, I'd recommend, recommend, recommend the committee consider a motion to stay with the MCAS assessments for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year. And I can notify the commissioner, that's our decision.
So moved.
Seconded?
Anybody?
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Yeah.
All of the favors, anyone saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask one quick question to that? Will the leadership team be moving forward some way, somehow to get, start getting used to the digital? I know we don't have a technology teacher or anything of that nature.
Yeah.
But I know, you know, based on where we're headed.
Yeah.
Will they have that?
This is gonna be a primary area for your new assistant superintendent, you know, to really engage in, in this, in this area. There's no question about it. No question about it.
And I would echo that. In the building I work in, we, we gave the MCAS.
We did too.
We are also a tryout.
We were too.
Paper version in grade three, math and ELA for park and-
We had the computer and it was, we had two classes of third grade side by side. And the infra, we have pretty good infrastructure and that infrastructure was shutting down quick. So they had to actually get up and move to another classroom so that the infrastructure could hold that's forty-eight kids.
Yeah.
It was, it was, you know, and that was with three or four technology coordinators in our building, standing there waiting at any moment for it to-
Hovering right over them, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the department, the department has indicated clearly that they were not adequately prepared for, for the onslaught onto the system. But they also recognized that in order to fully implement park, schools are gonna have to do a little bit more upgrading, you know, with, with that. So I think that glitch, I, I think was gonna be reasonably worked out next year. But it did, it did, a number of superintendents have commented about that shutdown and, and not having the capacity to do it.
And is it till two, we have to make a decision by two thousand sixteen or eighteen on park?
Well, the commission, the, the Board of Education does.
Okay.
All right? You know, this is a Board of Education decision. And then implementation. So the Board is, is, that's their vote, not yours.
But the final decision for that park, is it two thousand sixteen or two thousand?
Honestly-
Again, that would be by the state. That's not, that's not individual district.
No, no, I understand that, but moving, you know, you're looking at two thousand sixteen, which is, you know, right around the corner versus two thousand eighteen.
I understand it.
Well, there's gonna need to be, like you just said, the technology angle alone.
Yeah.
I mean, some of the, you know, poor districts are gonna need some significant grant funding to get up to speed and that'll take some time. I don't think they even have the hardware requirements out specifically yet. So there's a lot of hurdles still ahead. So I, I, I agree with what leadership team says.
The next item on the agenda is that your school committee policy and also state law, Mr. Tupin has given me a list of computer equipment that is surplus or failed. And in order for him to dispose of that, the committee needs to vote to approve the disposal of failed or surplus equipment. And the list is attached.
Uh, so moved? Motion for Mr. Jolly, second?
Second.
Seconded by Georgette. Any discussion?
Just one quick thing. Could our robotics group use any of this stuff?
Oh, yeah. They'll, they'll scavenge it if they want.
Okay, great.
Good point.
Go for it. Yeah, they can build something fun out of it.
It's just, we got a, we got a large closet of old computers and two thousand two, three computers are just old.
Great. Okay, all those in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
The next item is just an update on the, on the bus transportation. Erin came in with, to meet with the tellstones along with Mr. Ducham and I to kind of go over and to try to look at our analysis of whether or not we could eliminate. And the, the real savings was to eliminate, try to eliminate a solo middle and high school run. And based on the data, I met with, based on the enrollment data, it was determined that the district couldn't, could not eliminate that run. It's not that it's possible in the future. All right? And she's accounted for the variation on student drivers to kind of pull out those numbers. But it's not rec, it's not their recommendation that we cut, we cut a run. And that would, you know, we were hoping we could save thirty-nine thousand dollars for that, to, to do that. The next item is, we have, we have to go out for a rubbish collection. And we had, we sent out notices this year for quotes because this amount of money is below the threshold that we need to actually go out for a formal bid. We sent, we sent this out to multiple companies. The current vendor was the only one to provide us with the information. He actually provided the information as it is a bid and it technically is a quote, a request for a quote. But to, my recommendation is you accept the quote from Allied Waste Services. They're currently our vendor. They're out of Fall River and their price is actually the same. They're giving us the same price for dumpster removal.
Is it a yearly contract or is it?
This, this contract.
It, it looks like it's a year. July twenty-fourteen to July twenty-fifteen.
Yes, this will be a year, yearly contract. Thank you. Yes.
Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to accept the allied-
Quote, yeah. Quote from allied.
Something.
Waste, waste services.
Allied Waste Services of Fall River.
Yeah.
Motion made. Is there a second?
A second.
Second. All those in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Marty, could you just make a note that I abstained from the vote? Thank you.
The, the next item in there is just a, a report that I get from, from Jean Sheridan who runs our cafeteria program. And the good news is, it looks like she's gonna close the year without a, a deficit. The bad news is, we're not gonna put a lot of money into surplus and that's gonna present. But you've accounted, accounted for that by the price increase for next year. But I was really worried she was gonna go into deficit this year overall. But she's projecting at this point, probably come up with about six thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars at the end of, end of the school year. There is one issue. As you know, we have parents that can prepay for lunches. And we allow students to, that, you know, sometimes when they get to the end, they will say their mother's gonna send money, money's coming in or whatever. We try to collect all of that debt. At this point, she's estimating that we have about six hundred dollars of outstanding balances from families. And we're working to try to collect that. We need to get that off the books. The federal and state regulations don't allow that it can come out of the student lunch account. All right? So from an accounting point of view, you really don't want to let this build year over year. So what I'm recommending is that we cover the deficit out of, uh, uh, receivables in the school lunch program, out of the general fund. This will be an accounting hit when we close the books. So that when we close the books this year, we will still try to collect that money, but on paper, it's been, it's been wiped out. All right? And-
What is the process of collecting the money? Does it start?
I'll tell you.
Lot of letters.
Are you proud of the six hundred?
A lot of-
I paid mine. It was ten dollars.
Yeah.
And that was for three kids. They sent home a, a half sheet of paper and said, your child now owes. And they listed mine separately. And, and the next word said, and we'll receive a cheese sandwich.
And that's across district?
So if they're really doing that, then I would think people would pay because-
My kid, I go online. He's down to a buck. He just can't buy another snack. They'll give him one lunch or two lunches.
Right.
We, see, we don't have a limit. My, I, they go buy cookies and milk.
Oh, we have a limit either.
I'm not gonna complain about the milk.
Parents, you have to look at it and say-
But there's no-
You can qualify on that system, what you want your child to purchase.
Can I give him a little spending?
You can?
No, no.
I don't know about elementary.
On the school books? On this, my school books?
Yeah, my school books are the same, same thing.
No, no, you, you go online. You could, every parent can say, my child can't buy two snacks.
I have it right here. I can pull it up right here. Pull it up.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure it went home on paper too. Cause I know that I don't check that email often and then all of a sudden it's, oh.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure it goes on paper too.
And we communicate, then we follow it up and then we make phone calls.
I've never gotten a phone call.
Middle school is a little bit of an embarrassing factor.
The letter's enough.
The letter came home, I paid my bill.
After the half letter, you get a full letter.
But, you know, in talking to, you know, our auditor who'll be here next, next meeting, you know, this is just, you really don't want to have this thing accumulate. You know, and it's a few hundred dollars. It doesn't mean we're gonna give up trying to collect it. But the reality is the program, we should not have a deficit.
Right.
And it can't be charged off to the, to the, to the school lunch program.
Was this similar last year? Do you know if there was, I mean, I'm assuming it's everywhere that there's certain-
Yeah, it is.
I just didn't know if there was, you know, this similar amount, you know, last year.
I, I honestly don't know the answer to that, cause I asked Jean about where we stood for this year.
Right.
And my practice has always been, you know, if we're closing out and we do a fund balance transfer.
Yep.
Get it off the books. Doesn't mean we stop collecting it, but in some cases, we'll never collect it. All right?
So do you need a motion to-
Yes, a motion to approve a transfer from the general fund to cover the deficit and receivables for the school lunch program.
So moved?
Thank you.
Motion made. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, someone saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Abstentions?
Do I have to abstain now, right?
No.
Never know.
You're not giving a raise to anybody.
Okay.
Uh, where am I? Oh, FY fourteen budget update. Good news. Good news. We have a stronger position on the FY fourteen budget to share with you. And I apologize. I have reports for you. I don't know where they are. Oh, I put them in front of the place, didn't I?
You gave them to us, yeah.
Yeah.
There are two things to tell you. In the accounting, you had carryover funds from last year, what we call encumbrances to bring forward. The largest one was that health insurance account and it's listed on that sheet as BMR School District. And that, that's the health insurance balance. That's, because we encumber it and people can, you know, I, I think they have to notify us by the September if they're making a claim against that. So that liability, you know, we only had to pay out sixty-two thousand six, six- So that liability, you know, we only had to pay out sixty-two thousand six seventy-three, leaving us a balance of seventy-seven thousand, so the...
Good news.
It's good. This will go to E and D. This is good, all right? Yeah, in terms of that. But as I said to you, you, you still have money in your fiscal fifteen budget for this account and when I met with our health insurance accountant, this is your liability, the way it's spelled out in your contract, but we're getting fewer and fewer people passing in for the claims, all right? And it actually is, it scales down in, in terms of that. But the liability exists, but, you know, it's been two years now that we haven't spent the full allocated amount, but that money flows back to E and D. And we'll do the same thing this year. We'll encumber the amount in fiscal fourteen and I don't think, I don't think the, the claims will be, you know, for the deductibles, all right? So I think going forward, but this looks good.
There's a date though, right? Do you have to do it by?
I'm sorry?
There's a date?
Yes, yes, by the end of August, yeah.
Okay.
But it spans two fiscal years, so that's why it's an encumbrance. So the other document is the one that you have in front of you that...
Do you need mine?
Just look at it. Somehow managed to rumble my papers. This is the report that I've been giving you month over, you know, every quarter with Donna and as you heard me say at the Millville Town, Board of Selectments meeting, you know, we did have some savings this year in the unemployment account, so that's why we were able to offer to do the floor. And I met today with, with the company and he's going to get me a quote tomorrow so we can move forward, we can move forward with that. The good news is even with the deficit in special education and the money we've, we've held in regular education, it looks like we're going to close this year with a pretty good balance. Now again, we've already committed a hundred and fifty out of E and D to do that, but I think we're, we're in a good path to ratchet up our, our E and D, all right? The one area, I just want to tell you that we were holding off on some of the technology purchases that were in this year's budget and I've, I've, I've signed off on those requisitions to do that. So the good news is when you were having the discussion before about some of the replacement, I'm going to do some of that replacement now, okay?
Mm-hmm.
It was intended to be done this year, but I held on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So that's one of the things that we, we can revisit on the twenty-sixth, all right? In terms, in terms of where we, in terms of where we are, all right? And the biggest savings of all was real, was really in the, was really in the health insurance this year, which accounted for that. And we've got, I think, the special ed pretty well under control in terms of going forward, you know, with that. So this was the one I held my breath on for most of the year in terms, in terms of what we, what we were holding back, all right? But our legal, our legal expenses are down, our, our, some of the other expenses were down and we're, we're in good shape. So you will be putting money in E and D.
Good.
To, to do that. Any questions? The last item is probably one I've already gone over, the state budget and the, the transportation, you know, that issue in the memo from Joe, we talked about that already. The last item I have there is the BIKO budget. The Bi-County Collaborative sets a budget and you have to be informed and the Bi-County Educational Collaborative Board certified, you know, this budget and it's really for your information only, but under the new regulations on collaboratives, you have to be told what their budget is and what's going on with that, all right? And I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you. Second public forum, seeing nobody, we'll move forward.
Can we start with a full room?
Anyway, I have one other thing.
Yes, we did.
I need to put closure on the extended day program, okay? I have to notify the people that have been working for us, so, you know, just as, as a way, we've talked about it, we're not going forward with it, but is it not the consensus of the, we're not going forward with the extended day program next year? So I send a notice, I have to send a notice to Nadine Carter, but also the part-time people, just to officially say that we're not going forward with that. With that said, I did have a meeting yesterday down at the Boys and Girls Club. I met with the director and the program director about them taking a look at the extended day program. They have, they have a board meeting on June the sixteenth and they will bring it to their board. There are a couple of issues that are peculiar to their situation. They get licensed under a different state agency than we do, so they would have to pursue a license to operate off their site. And it doesn't come under the Department of Education, it comes under early childhood and care. So it's a different agency for them and they had some concerns about, you know, developing the program. So I suggested that they have a discussion with their board and come back to me and let me know what they, what their thinking is to kind of go forward with it. And we could work some, and I could bring it back, you know, for the committee to have some discussion. They were interested, but they do have a couple of technical issues relative to their license is not transferable out of their facility to another place. They'd have to get a, another light, a site license, all right? It's not impossible, but it is, it is a little bit of bureaucratic work that they have to do in terms of that.
Would we have any additional requirements?
I'm sorry?
Would we have any additional requirements and we're really becoming a subcontract, we're subcontracting to them if we were to do that, right?
Correct. They would, they would, they would, the things that come to my mind is we'd have to enter into an agreement with them, they would have to provide a certificate of insurance, you know, relative to their program staff, you know, because they would, like any outside group, would be using our, our building and our facility and, and have a certificate of insurance for liability purposes.
And they'd just be renters. They would literally be renting a space and that would be...
Correct, correct. Or, or accommodating you in other ways, you know, I want to leave that open.
Yeah.
It would be better if they could keep the price down because the buildings are open and they're being heated, you know, so that's, you know, that's, I told them that, you know, they should think long and hard of what, what would make sense, you know, in terms of doing it, all right? So the program director was actually going over to visit the after-school program either today or tomorrow to kind of take a look at it.
Is it Sarah here?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, in, in terms of that. The other thing, you know, we, we said we don't share good news. Last week, on Friday, I got to do two things that a superintendent loves to do. I got to read in a kindergarten class, my picture, okay? Wendy's son Lucas is in this class, all right? And we got to read the book about Elmer, the patchwork elephant, and they've all sent me their writings of that. They, they posed for the picture and then they gave me a group hug.
Oh.
Okay? And then the other highlight is at the end of the day, you know, was to attend graduation. And, and you get to, you get to see the children coming into us in kindergarten and you get to hear seniors talking about their, their experience being in our schools and how the schools helped them to grow and develop and to set paths to go off into the world, either in post-secondary education or out into the world of work or whatever. So it was a wonderful contrast. I hadn't thought about it until I looked at my schedule and said, "This is the perfect way for a superintendent to spend graduation days in a kindergarten class with children learning to read and then going into the high school graduation," so.
And I actually attended on the same day the, right here, the National Arts Society, National Junior Arts Society. It was, it was, that was a great, Steve did it before me a couple of years and I kind of graduated because my, my daughter's there and that was a great, that was a great event as well. Okay, so you're, you're good?
I believe that's all I have. I have run out of paper.
We'll move right into the school committee forum.
Similar to what Dr. Davis said, most of us, I think, attended the graduation the other night and that was, that was great. It was great to see all the kids, great to see the families.
Beautiful night.
Congratulations. Yeah, it didn't rain, that's great news. It was perfect, perfect weather, I thought. Again, congratulations to all of them. One important thing, June thirtieth at Millville Elementary, we're going to have an additional town meeting. There's one warrant article on that. It's about the funding for the, going forward for the BMR budget. So hopefully they will be there again June thirtieth at Millville Elementary. Thanks.
Thank you for the invite.
Anytime.
See you there. You know, I found it, it was a really interesting night to come in and have, you know, all of our, a lot of retirees here. You know, we saw, we had some current retirees come in, we had past retirees and we talked about in the package tonight, some future retirees. So it was, it was pretty neat to see the people who have, you know, provided service to our, our communities and to our children over the years to, to be here and seeing them get together. I, I thought that was really pretty cool, as, as you know by my comments earlier. The other thing I wanted to say is graduation was great, but just a reminder to all you seniors who are watching, I'm sure a lot of them are watching, a hundred percent of them are doing something next year. We got ninety percent going to colleges.
Ninety-two.
Ninety percent. I thought it was ninety percent going to colleges, six percent going into the workforce and four percent going into the military. So that's a hundred percent, no matter how you slice it.
All accounted for.
So we better not see any of you hanging around the streets of Blackstone Millville next year because we know where you're supposed to be. So congratulations to the two thousand fourteen class.
And I will say the same, congratulations to the two thousand fourteen. It was my first graduation ceremony here and it was very impressive and I thought the student speakers were phenomenal and that's a good testament to the education and development that they received. So I thought that was really neat. And I too was, I mean, you saw my expression when I walked in and looked at the room and went, "Who are all these people?" So it was nice to see some names that you certainly see on the walls and see who those people actually were. So that was kind of exciting to me because that's a, a first for me. And I certainly hope that we can come to a resolution at our next meeting that, that's beneficial to everyone involved.
Okay, I want to say that was the first award ceremony that, that I've ever been to and I was really impressed. I mean, the bands, the jazz band, that was awesome. My daughter's a junior this year, so I'll be going to that stuff next year and just want to say congratulations to all the students that graduated, the class of two thousand fourteen. Also, in honor of Kevin Maloney, I had, I was able to get to know him going to, you know, Blackstone Millville and, and he deserves it and I, I think it's a great idea and I'm happy that they were here tonight and I look forward to seeing that plaque at the track.
I echo everybody in saying congratulations to the class of two thousand fourteen. I know we've been talking a lot about fundraising tonight and, you know, I, I can honestly say that I was one of the houses that got flocked this week and I, I think it's a great fundraiser because it's bringing the community together. I can tell you that one of my kids woke up at ten-thirty at night and I went to cover him up and I looked out and I saw somebody on my front lawn and I ran out to open the window and I stopped and I go, "I think I'd be a flock." And I stared at them. And then I, my kids woke up and they just, they loved it. And then we were driving through the town and we, they're saying, "Mommy, we got, they got flocked, they got flocked." It's just a really great fundraiser. It's positive, it brings the town together and I can tell you that I laughed all day long, my husband laughed all day long. So keep flocking.
Do you know who flocked you?
I do not. Was it you?
I think it was Erin.
I already said Erin. And then I thought it was my brother and he said, "No," so watch out.
I know who flocked me and it was my neighbors.
You just never know. All I can say is watch out.
And I would like to say that the flock comes with a form to flock, so watch out.
You can buy insurance if you don't want to be flocked.
You can, you can buy insurance against being flocked too, that's funny. So June thirtieth, Millville Town Meeting, I'll, I'll say tentative right now, once they sign the warrant tomorrow, it's a definite.
And we'll meet right before that too.
I would like to recommend the babysitting and, you know, pizza party if we can do that. I, we'll gladly buy the pizza if I'm allowed to, I'm not sure. It's going to be a tough time because it's the first week of summer vacation.
I'll be in Storyland.
Vacation, but we still need the support there. This is not over until that, that meeting closes on June thirtieth. I, I know Millville's going to work very hard to make their recommendations on where that money's coming from. We need the people there to vote for it because they may ask for stabilization, which is still going to require two-thirds vote. It's going to be their recommendation this time, that is going to make a difference on how it's presented. And I would definitely like to say congratulations to the graduates. It was a beautiful night and a beautiful ceremony and I wish them well.
And I echo what everyone's saying, I know it's late and, you know, we're going to, we're going to move forward. I know this has been an exhausting process the last eight months, but particularly the last couple of months. So I'm looking forward to getting this resolved either way and then moving forward and really planning out what the next fiscal year is going to look like for us as well in terms of the subcommittees. We have a lot, we have, beyond budget, we still have a lot of stuff to do around the regional agreement and curriculum and hiring. We're not hiring, but an assistant superintendent coming on board and really kind of formulating that. So we're really at the, at the beginning point of now we're fiscally, I was going to say fiscally sound, but we have a good fiscal infrastructure moving forward and now we're really going to get into the other work as well. So I look forward to that. So with that, I will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Can I just comment? At your next meeting, it's going to be obviously, I've got Dan Hayes from Scanlon Associates coming in to present and he's actually presenting two audits, fiscal thirteen, fiscal twelve and thirteen. I will get to you the audits.